Alrighty, and good evening, and welcome to our regular meeting for the month of February. Wow, it's February already. Let's begin with reports from the dais. Let's begin with the University of Virginia.
I don't really have much to report.
I don't think the mic's on.
Am I on, or?
No, the mic's not on.
Okay, should I wait?
Yeah.
I can talk loud.
The people watching can't hear you.
That's true. Do you like...
What happened this time? That always happens to you.
Cameras aren't on either. Mics aren't on.
They don't have...
They don't have those on in here, but... Oh, you're good.
I'm on. Alright.
Alright, Bill, what do you have?
All that to say, I don't have a whole lot to report. One project we do have coming online soon, which you might notice, is the softball stadium up at the corner of Massey and Copley. There's a lot of activity going on up there, but it should be open for opening day, and I think it's early March, so that'll be exciting for that program.
Ms. Green, anything to report?
We had a TJPDC meeting last Thursday, and due to illness, I was unable to make it, so I'll have to be back with a lot of new members at the beginning of March.
Reverend Eaton, I'll come back to you.
Thanks. I have no report.
Ms. Dowell?
Um, on Tuesday at four, the CDBD Task Force will be reviewing that grant applications and also preparing a proposal for city council.
We had an MPO tech meeting where we approved a reallocation of funds for CAT into automated passenger counters, so that will help us get more accurate information on boardings onto the bus, particularly the trolley, where there's been some issues with data accuracy in the past and people getting missed, which reduces our total funding. We also discussed our targets for injuries and fatalities in the area, and so our target is now fifteen non-motorist serious injuries and fatalities. We call it Vision Fifteen.
Alright.
Can you expand on that? Like, we want to see fif... I mean, or not, or less than...
We're shooting for, or, well, it's not actually a reduction, but the targets are for, it was a little bit unclear, and I hope we'll discuss it again, but essentially, we set targets for what the goal is, where obviously, we would love it to be zero, but I guess that's not practical or something we're willing to commit to what's necessary to make that happen, and so we just set metrics so that we can measure ourselves against it. So I guess if we get less than fifteen, we'll consider it a success, and that's in the general MPO area, not just Charlottesville.
What is, what is our normal, I mean, if we're shooting for fifteen, are we at thirty, fifty?
We're at about fifteen.
Fifty?
Fifteen.
Oh, oh.
Actually, I believe it's been a slight upward trend in recent years for not entirely clear reasons, probably more distracted drivers as smartphones have become popular, and because vehicle mile travel has increased since the recession.
Mr. Zhu Eight?
On January 30th, the Housing Advisory Committee's Policy Subcommittee met to discuss kicking off the housing strategy with the consultant team with some new information. A lot of information that I think will be shared with you, so I didn't take very good notes, so I won't talk about it. They had some new statistical information that I'd never seen before, looking at African-American homes in the area. See if I can get it. Here we go. A twenty-six percent shift adjusted for inflation for African-American households, including a seventeen percent income loss and a nine percent rent cost growth, the worst of any group that they looked at, really startling.
Ms. Dela.
So, I attended a tree commission meeting, I'm sorry, on February 4th last week. Our new chair, Brian Menard, Chair of the Meeting, and our Vice Chair, Peggy Van Yerres, was there as well, and both of those are new officers. Brian reviewed the commission's structure and goals for the coming year. We're going to have subcommittees, three of them, Education and Advocacy, Arbor, which is tree planting projects, and then Codes and Practices, which is coordination with city planning. And put it on your calendar, Arbor Day is on April 24th, so get that, get that down, don't have any conflicts. Discuss the upcoming canopy study by the consultant and the kind of evaluation criteria. This is done every five years, and it'll be done this coming August, and, well, in early fall. And then lastly, for tree commission, the Tree Planting Committee has started to reach out to representatives in the low-canopy city neighborhoods for targeting next fall's tree planting project. In the Board of Architectural Review, that was held on January 22nd, we had three certificate of appropriateness applications, two approved, one deferred, and then we had a preliminary discussion over the conceptual design for 612 West Main Street, which is where the University Tire is on West Main. And in general, our comments were, recommendations were to break down the monumentality of what we saw and diversify the facade to mimic the existing building pattern, and also to open up the streetscape floor to activate the pedestrian and street more. That's it.
Cool. Hey, I don't think that I've got anything to report. There is a meeting tomorrow that the NDS Director, Alex, has invited me to, and I believe this is going to be a joint meeting between the University of Virginia, the County of Albemarle, and the City of Charlottesville that's focused on urban and environmental planning issues, so that'll be tomorrow. And if you don't know anything about it, Bill, get with me after, and I'll give you the logistics. Or maybe there's somebody else.
We have a PAC Tech. Reformatted PAC Tech.
Good. Ms. Creasy?
Can I ask you to report on the comprehensive plan, since you all were there this last week?
We had, you're talking... Sorry. Talking about the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee...
Correct.
...associated with the new consultants that have just been hired to marshal that, the comp plan to completion in two years. Yes, Lyle and I are representing the Planning Commission. It was mostly a night of being introduced to the three consultants that are doing the project, and in understanding their roles and expectations, and then the different members of the steering committee, which is quite large, about sixteen, seventeen people, going through, talking about their expectations, and then sort of, Lyle remembers better than I, I'm sure his mind is young and supple. I, what I do remember is the fact that we were, Lyle and I were asked why the comprehensive plan process that the Planning Commission was, was doing, why it stopped all of a sudden, and frankly, I couldn't tell them. No one from city council was there during this part of the meeting, and, and I'm sorry that there's no one from city council on the steering committee, and we, I've only heard anecdotally why it was stopped, but I've never seen anything officially from city council, so I couldn't answer the question. Lyle, please.
I can just add that the steering committee will be meeting every two to three months, and we will have notice, so we can bring questions and issues.
So we can have a work session prior? Okay.
Why, yes, we are.
Fantastic.
Yes, and in fact, I, I did ask if it'd be okay to invite our past planning commissioners who were part of the Planning Commission, or, I'm sorry, the Comprehensive Plan Study that we're doing, to be there as well, and that has been approved.
Question? Just out of curiosity, so, in some of the planning that we already had done before it was stopped, like, is it being, our information being included about like the housing types that we said we wanted to see in certain areas of the city, and where the people, the places or nodes that people were interested in, and where we should be focusing on?
All the material that we generated, draft plans, discussions, the booklets that staff put together to summarize the various public engagement phases, all of that has been shared with the consultants, and staff did a wonderful job compiling that information for them.
Thank you.
Would you like for me to give you some information on why it stopped?
Sure. Well, I don't know that I need it, but, or...
Well, if you don't know the answer, and you're there as a planning commission, I mean, I'm a little bit shocked that we don't know the answer. Do we not feel like we know the answer? Okay, so we were presenting in December of 2018 at this point, to where we were, there was a lot of concern that the housing strategy had not been done, so there was a, there was a new staff member, long-range planner, that had been funded at that point. Ah, see, it's all coming back. A long-range planner had been funded by council at that point, and they were supposed to come on board, so that the land use plan, comp plan, and the housing strategy could go in parallel timing. Then we got a new city manager, and he stopped that long-range plan, and then we went to an RFP for a consultant, and that's where we are.
Oh, actually, I do have...
And we're back.
Quick update on that from our last place meeting, which I think was actually before our last PC meeting, but the long-range planner is back, so that job listing is open. I believe they're still accepting applications, so apply today.
From 2019?
Yep, so it was...
I don't think so, because that long-range planner was going to be in the city manager's office as potentially an assistant city manager or something, and now I think it's going back in the planning department, Missy?
A lot of this is still in flux.
There you go. That's why we stopped.
Alright, let's, let's keep rolling, we're getting a little bogged down. Ms. Creasy, do you have a report for me? Yes?
Sure. We, you all, we all have a work session on February 26th. This is a Wednesday instead of our regular fourth Tuesday, so we do not have a work session on the 25th, our regular fourth Tuesday, we have it on Wednesday, the 26th, and this is an extended work session, which all of you all approve to do from five to eight. We're going to start with a discussion, presentation on the Cherry Avenue Small Area Plan with, with next steps to get that ready to come to you all for public hearing. Next, we're going to have our work session with the consultants on the three plans that are underway, and we'll be working to get agenda prepared for that with the consultants later this week. We do have confirmations from Kurt, Jenny, Cory concerning coming, and I want to say there's somebody else whose name is escaping me at the moment, but coming to be part...
John Santoski.
John, yes, John as well, thank you.
Is Cory coming, even though he's on the county planning commission now?
He feels like his schedule could make it work, so, so we've heard back from them, and they're interested in coming and sharing their experience with the comp plan, with the group, and so we've let the consultants know that as well, to try and shape what they're going to do that evening to accommodate that part of the discussion. And then we're going to end the work session with a preliminary discussion on the latest version of the Stribling Avenue project. If you all remember, that came to you before, and a couple of other versions, they've taken some steps back, and they have a new proposal to share with the group. So it's going to be a very packed agenda, we're going to work on keeping everybody in a general good timeframe there, so that we can get people out in a timely manner, but I appreciate everyone kind of working their schedules to make all of those things happen with all of those individuals coming that evening. We're still working on final location, because that's not our regular night, and that's other groups' regular nights, we're having a little bit of a challenge there, but we'll make something happen with that, and that is pretty much the big news.
Right, that's a lot. Alright, what I'd like to do now is to open up the first of two public comment sections. The, this one would be an opportunity to talk about anything you'd like to talk about that is not on the formal agenda, so we won't be talking about the Barracks and Emmett Intersection until a little later, we won't be talking about the Harris Street SUP until a little later, but if you've got anything else you'd like to talk about, now would be the, now would be the time to do that. Please come up, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes, so, public comment now open. Did anyone sign up? Alright, public comment is now closed. The next section, public comment section, is scheduled to begin at six, so we will be in recess until... I'm just trying to rush you guys through this. We need to talk about the consent agenda, so, there are three things on the consent agenda, two things relate to the minutes, and the third thing relates to the way the commission interacts with one another and with the general public. It has been asked that we take, remove the third item from the consent agenda, and we'll be talking about that at the end of the meeting, but I would like a motion for the minutes, please.
Yep, so I move to approve the minutes in the consent agenda, items one and two, with three modifications. Number one, the clarification on the motion on page fourteen. Number two, a correction from Litch to Lytec, and number three...
This was clarification with the language...
Clarification that students were not reached by the Fontaine Streetscape outreach.
That they did not participate.
They did not participate, yeah.
Right.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and proper second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved. So, now, we will be in recess until six. Hold on, Bridge Street.
Check, you know that you know she was running late or you just know she's running late?
No, I don't know that she's running late.
She's usually pretty early.
Yeah, she's very.
Johnny on the spot.
Yeah.
Really? You're right about no, she can't be running out. My good old days.
Yeah, he's like, "She canceled for you guys tonight."
There she is. Damn it, check there.
But you don't have to say anything. Trying to get you in trouble.
Alrighty, I think we are ready to reengage, reengage in our deliberations. Madam Vice Mayor, is counsel in order? Is counsel in order? Madam? We are in order. Alright, we've got a couple of items on our public hearing agenda. The, um, is that where we are now?
Yes.
Yes. And the first item is CP 20-0001. And this is a proposed Barracks Road and Emmett Street, um, intersection improvement. The, um, the improvements will be, um, will be operational and, uh, levels of service and safety upgrades, but they will also include, um, shared biking areas and pedestrian paths. The question that we have to answer, and this is the only question we're going to attempt to answer tonight, is are these improvements consistent with the comprehensive plan that we have today? There will be lots of opportunity to drill down on these specifics. I'm talking about widths and heights and things like that, but we, today, our task is to make certain that the general character of what we are presented, um, fits into the com plan. And again, many other opportunities to drill down on the, the specific details that are, that are very important to, to, to many of us. So, Mr., Mr. Kling, I think you've got this.
Good evening, I'm Kyle Kling, Transportation Project Manager with the Department of Public Works. Uh, we're here tonight for the Barracks and Emmett Smart Scale Project, compliance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, real quickly, in 2018, the city was awarded an $8.6 million VDOT Smart Scale grant for improvements along the corridor. Uh, the scope generally includes, uh, improvements to all phases and functionality of, uh, operations at the intersection of Barracks and Emmett. It also has a second component which, uh, takes into account bicycle and pedestrian upgrades, uh, from the intersection, uh, eastbound up to Hilltop Road. Um, last summer, the city began working closely with Timmons Group, uh, on preliminary engineering and design work for the project. Uh, since last summer, uh, we've been, um, entrenched in a pretty detailed public involvement, uh, process. Uh, we've held multiple open houses, steering committee meetings, uh, to solicit feedback. Uh, where we are currently today is we have developed a conceptual design, uh, for the project, which we'll be presenting tonight for, uh, um, compliance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, I'll hand it over now to Brian Copeland, our consultant with the Timmons Group. Uh, after the presentation, I will be happy to take any questions from you guys.
Thank you, Kyle. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Commission. This evening, I'd like to go through, uh, some of the details of the project's scope and schedule, uh, some of the public engagement we've been through at this point, uh, share with you some of the details of the conceptual design, of the preferred concept that we've developed to this point, as well as highlight some of the, uh, components of alignment with the comprehensive plan. First off, I'd like to start with the purpose of the project. Purpose of the project is to improve the operational performance of the Barracks and Emmett intersection while also enhancing bike, pedestrian, and trans facilities for the neighborhood. The project limits, uh, generally along Barracks Road between Emmett Street and Buckingham Road, um, some intersection improvements specifically, uh, aimed at the Emmett Street, uh, intersection, um, and so that's an overall of the, of the project limits. Like Kyle had mentioned, in 2018, uh, $8.6 million was awarded to the city to fully fund a project that would include some significant, uh, improvements to the corridor, including an additional northbound right turn lane on Emmett Street, the addition of, uh, an additional westbound left turn lane to allow concurrent left turn lanes, um, eastbound and westbound on, on Barracks Road, uh, traffic signal improvements, including pedestrian controls, uh, improved pedestrian controls through the intersection, um, increasing the width of the, uh, the refuge islands in the intersection to provide, uh, acceptable refuge for pedestrians, uh, crossing the intersection on all legs, um, providing upgraded bike and pedestrian facilities along Barracks Road up to Hilltop or, and/or, um, Buckingham Road, as well as incorporation of a new cat bus shelter, um, on Barracks Road as well. In terms of schedule, uh, over the last six months, we've been working on collecting survey data, performing traffic analyses, meeting with committee members, uh, engaging with the public, uh, in, in several modes, which we'll get into a little bit later, and now we're at the point where we're meeting with you folks, um, entering into the preliminary design of the project. Moving forward from this, we intend to, uh, move into the detailed engineering design that will finish up with a design public hearing down the road when more of the design details are worked out, so we're able to present some of those details to the public, uh, and get VDOT design approval. Heading into the summer of 2021, uh, we plan to finalize most of the design detail and start the acquisition of right-of-way and relocation of any private utilities that may be necessary, um, all leading up to, uh, VDOT's authorization to advertise a construction in 2023. Talking a little bit through the public engagement process we followed at this point, uh, residents that live within the project limits, um, were contacted and offered the opportunity to meet with Kyle and I on, on July 23rd. Uh, we came up and, and met with as many as we could that were available on that date, and I know Kyle has followed up and met with several, several others afterwards. Uh, at those meetings, we sat down, we reviewed the scope of the project, the schedule, scheduled project, then went, and then we listened. Couple of the, the primary concerns that we came away with hearing was, uh, concerns with impacts to their property, specifically the tree canopy in their front yards, uh, which will turn out to be a resounding theme through the process, uh, and also safety, safety pulling out of the driveways, uh, a lot of, um, increased speeds that, uh, they're concerned with on Barracks Road, um, along with other things, but those were the two overarching, uh, things that we heard. Uh, two days later, we met, uh, had our first steering committee, steering committee meeting on July 25th. At that meeting, we, we highlighted a lot of the known concerns that we have along the corridor, at the intersection, uh, bike pedestrian safety, um, some concerns with that. Uh, we reviewed the smart scale scope and, and, uh, results of the traffic study that we did, um, but a lot of the, the meeting was focused in on trying to structure, um, questions that we'd like to include in a project survey that would go live at our first, uh, or after our first public workshop. After that discussion, and we were able to structure some, some good questions, uh, we opened it up to, for discussion with the group, um, and a lot of the takeaways that, that we continued to hear through the process were making sure that we're protecting the neighborhood character, improving congestion at the intersection, reducing speeds along Barracks Road, and doing what we can to make biking and walking safer along Barracks Road. We also, um, at this time, uh, started the project website, www.barracksemmetimprovements.com. So following that meeting, we held our first public workshop. At the meeting, we presented three intersection improvement options. Uh, two of the options are pictured in the lower left-hand corner. The first option was, was an approach that stayed within the confines of the existing roadway, um, worked within the limits, the curb lines, and the edge of pavements to try to get as much out of that pavement as we possibly could. Option three, uh, was the other extreme where we added pavement, pavement widening, particularly on the north side of Barracks Road, to extend the amount of pavement available for queuing, um, and then demonstrated that by doing that, you would be introducing a, uh, very tall retaining wall on the property on the north side. So if you're familiar with the intersection at Meadowbrook, you, you know that there's a, a very hall, very tall, um, embankment, uh, that would need to be cut into for that option. Also, at the public workshop, we presented four options for bicycle and pedestrian improvements running along Barracks Road. Uh, the first option was a dedicated climbing lane in-road, um, with a curb, a buffer strip, and a five-foot sidewalk. The second option, uh, included, uh, a protected climbing lane, and by providing the protection, it was offset by removing the buffer strip, moving the sidewalk, uh, all the way in, all focused in on trying to limit the height of the retaining wall, that's proposed, and limiting the impact of the trees. Option three incorporates, um, a, a full-width buffer strip, uh, a 10-foot shared-use path, and, and moving the curb line into the road, um, and the option four basically is the same as option three with the elimination of the buffer strip. Following the presentation of those options, both from the intersection and bicycle pedestrian improvements, the survey, uh, went live to the public, and these are the results, uh, in a nutshell. So the infographic that's there shows there were 90 respondents, 90% of which live in the project area or commute along the, along Barracks. The feedback that we got on the intersection options shows that 60% of the respondents preferred option one, which is to eliminate any retaining walls. I would point out that our preferred approach recognizes that and incorporates that. The number-one priority, there was an opportunity to, uh, to rank eight different, um, uh, components of the project and list their importance. Increasing, uh, pedestrian safety was the number-one ranked priority. We think we've done that. We, uh, of the two, or of the four bike-ped options, um, 66% preferred the shared-use path option over the in-road bike facility options, so options three and four, we've, we've recognized that, and that's what our preferred concept is incorporating. Fifty, uh, of the, of the, uh, the shared-use path options, nearly 50%, uh, preferred the landscape buffer versus not having a landscape buffer. We'll get into that a little bit more. The, um, the respondents preferred to restrict access at Meadowbrook Road, restricting that to ride-in, ride-out access for safety and traffic flow reasons, and, and we think that makes a lot of sense. We've incorporated that, we've listened, and we've incorporated. As part of the steering committee meeting, um, we, uh, structured the question, since there seemed to be some question as to whether people would use Barracks Road for biking, even with improvements, so we asked, "If the corridor were improved, would you bike on it?" Uh, 53% of the respondents said that they would bike on it if it were made safer. And lastly, um, the right turn lane of, operationally, functionality-wise, the right turn, westbound right turn lane at the intersection, um, wants to be a through-right from the operational standpoint, um, but we heard, uh, many, many times through some of the feedback that we got, that they prefer that to be a right turn lane only, and so we've incorporated that into the design. Following, uh, the receipt of that, we met the second time with the steering committee, uh, we reviewed these results with them, and then, uh, followed up with presentation of our preferred alternative with them, um, where we highlighted some of the areas that we've incorporated. Generally, but not totally, there was agreement, agreement with the, um, some of the findings that were here, and some of the incorporation of the feedback into that, um, with the lone exception being how we, option three versus option four, buffer strip versus no buffer strip, um, was, was debated vigorously in our second steering committee meeting, um, and, uh, basically with, around the value of having the buffer strip or not having. After the meeting, we took a vote as to how many folks wanted it and how many folks didn't. Uh, the majority of the members voted not to have the buffer strip. In terms of the concept design that we presented, um, this was presented at the, the, the next open house, um, and there's a tip, a cross-section on the lower right-hand corner, but we believe this concept, uh, improves the operational performance of the intersection, provides a much safer bicycle and pedestrian environment, not only through the intersection, but also down Barracks Road. Um, we've relocated the curb line to reduce speeds, again, uh, something we heard time and time again from folks about vehicle speed, so we've incorporated that into the design by moving the curb line in. Um, we've added the shared-use path and the three-foot buffer strip that we talked about, and, uh, we'll get into some retaining wall options as well. We also heard, uh, concern with wall heights and tree impacts, so we looked at the differences between what the wall heights would become in option three versus option four, those are shown here. Um, we looked at ways, we thought about what are some ways that we can create the results of option four that didn't have a buffer strip, but still try to maintain some semblance of a bus, buffer strip to revise some of those important functions. Um, we also looked at tree impacts, so the red, um, trees were the trees that would be directly impacted by the, by the, uh, shared-use path, orange are trees within a five-foot area, and the green are between five and 10 feet from the retaining wall. So this is, uh, a picture of Barracks Road, um, today, if you were to look westbound. This is what the preferred option could look like, uh, implemented. There's some concerns about what that wall might look like, so there are options with, uh, the, uh, using slip forms in front of the structural components of the retaining wall to provide different architectural treatments, and, uh, so we can use stone, we can use brick, we could use printed, uh, uh, form liners in front of the, uh, the structural components. There's different treatments, these are just options, uh, these haven't been decided upon, but these things that we would, uh, look to evolve through the process. Alignment with the comprehensive plan, um, first and foremost, we looked at opportunities and incorporating things we felt we reasonably could with preservation of the, the neighborhood character, uh, we've looked at, at ways to minimize impacts to the utility infrastructure, um, obviously with incorporation of multimodal access to businesses, looking at, uh, consistency with economic sustainability. Uh, we're repurposing asphalt, um, by moving the curb line in, that's, uh, a, a part of our environmental approach, um, incorporating several components of this, the complete streets, goals of the comprehensive plan, as well as looking at context-sensitive design treatments for the retaining wall, uh, and, um, and the like. The bicycle master plan, um, designates this corridor, uh, as a bicycle arterial route, and based on that and the grades, we feel like it's appropriate to have separated bike facilities, um, in the plan. The Streets of Work Plan also designates this as a mixed-use B and a neighborhood A typology. Um, these are, this is somewhat of a comparison between the two, uh, but note, noting the consistency between the two, that it recommends a three-foot to six-foot, uh, curbside buffer zone, and I just want to emphasize some of the, uh, benefits that we think, uh, can be provided by providing a three-foot buffer zone. It's consistent with the city's bike-ped master plan as shown, provides, uh, additional physical and, uh, visual separation from cars, provides space for utilities, lighting, um, it also, leaves the, the shared-use path unimpeded, uh, from all those roadside obstacles, um, and provides a traffic calming effect along with other benefits, uh, that we think, that we feel are appropriate and consistent with the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission? Ms. Dowell, you look like, uh, Mr. Soliates.
Uh, this is the one we've, uh, discussed a little bit. Um, there's, I've heard a little, a lot of concern about, uh, induced demand and cut-through traffic, uh, can you discuss that?
Yeah, so, uh, that's a concern that we've heard a couple of times, uh, and, uh, you've voiced it, a couple of members of the public have voiced it as well. Um, I think we're exploring options of putting signage along different, uh, routes in the neighborhood, that's one, uh, option we've considered, um, so it is something that's on our radar.
Thank you. Um, we've heard a number of concerns about, um, ADA access on this, uh, path, um, will it be fully ADA compliant?
Yeah, it's our intent to make it, uh, fully ADA compliant. It is a shared-use path, those do have, uh, some different regulations, uh, than, than sidewalks or trails, um, but yes, it'll be 100% ADA compliant.
Even with that grade and that slope?
Yeah, so, um, there is a portion of ADA, as long as you follow the grade of the roadway, um, on a sidewalk or shared-use path, and you don't deviate from that, uh, then it's considered to be ADA compliant. Uh, we haven't dug into details yet, but, uh, I know, uh, we received a comment looking, um, for level landing areas along the path as well, uh, that's something we're, we'll explore, um, obviously, uh, you'll have some natural level landing areas as you cross driveways, but, um, we will look into that in more detail as we progress with design.
I also would like, I also would like to point out the, another benefit of having the three-foot buffer spaces at driveways, so to get up six inches to the left, to the elevation of the shared-use path, that three-foot buffer strip provides for that ramping of that first three feet to get up to six inches, so that you have a fully accessible cross-slope of the shared-use path all the way through. If you push the, the, the shared-use path all the way to the curb, that ramping extends into the traversable and accessible portion of the shared-use path.
Can I ask a question of the consultant? The, I'm, I'm guessing that we're not pretending that that three-foot, uh, buffer strip is a, is for trees, there are not going to be any trees. How many trees have we lost by moving the retaining wall three feet more into the embankment?
We have not done that evaluation, but we can do it and provide those numbers.
Thank you.
I have a similar question on the, the section where you have, uh, a large number of trees in pink and yellow, you know, ones that will be affected when they're within three feet, is it anticipated the ones that are yellow or orange, whatever, that are, will die eventually because they're so close to them? Is that, because I'm looking at that one section, it looks like it's pretty much be deforested.
It, it depends, it depends on the, the size of the tree, so the root zone is based on the, the size of the tree, so there's a lot of variables that will go into that. Again, something else we looked at, we would look at more closely through the design.
Anything else?
Could we pull back the map of the street and be shown where the seven-foot-tall, uh, retaining wall would be, or what section of that street?
Because as we heard in pre-meeting, that retaining wall varies in size along that corridor.
Right, but they have, on the map, indications of where the heights are along that section that you cannot read in the materials.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so, uh, there's some little boxes under the, uh, trees that are, uh, different colors there, uh, this is, uh, available on the project website, however, uh, the tallest section of the wall is going to be up there on the, um, far east end of the project, up there in Hilltop Road, um, in that section, uh, it's about 250 feet, um, from that driveway to Hilltop, uh, in that section, you're looking at a maximum height of seven feet, uh, average height of five feet along that stretch, um, minimum three feet. Uh, for the rest of the corridor, you're looking at an average of three feet, uh, in the wall height from that first driveway down to, uh, the end of the map there.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Green, are you thinking about something you want to ask, or? Counsel, do you have any questions? Did anyone not know? Okay, okay. Are we ready for public comments? Right, alright, why don't we open it up now for public comments? And we've got a number of people that have signed up. The first person, I believe, is Tim Heffey.
Thank you very much, and good evening, I'm Tim Heffey, I live at 2028 Barracks Road, which is right here in the project area, I'm also here on behalf of the Venable Neighborhood Association, which includes the project area. Uh, let me say at first that we don't oppose the Neighborhood Association, nor any of the neighbors that you'll hear from, improvements to the corridor, it's just a question of, uh, whether or not the proposed plan actually does improve the corridor in a way that would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we think it does not in three very specific ways. Uh, the first, with respect to the tree canopy, the comprehensive plan in Environment Section 2.2 explicitly says that, uh, the comprehensive plan should expand and protect the overall tree canopy. We have real concerns that with respect to this proposed option, option three, as presented, um, by the consultant, we would substantially diminish the tree canopy. Uh, the three-foot buffer zone in particular pushes back and encroaches into the land along Barracks Road, a pretty substantial amount of that hill, and it would kill trees, as your question, Mr. Heaton, pointed out, those, those orange, uh, circles may very well represent dead trees. There's been a proposal that there would be replanted trees, but we're concerned about, uh, that would not be able to sufficiently replace the dense tree canopy that is unique to that corridor. That's particularly true with respect to a couple of different areas, as Kyle just indicated, up close to Buckingham, that would be a seven-foot wall. There's also a proposed bus stop down at the very other end that would even cut deeper into the hill and require a higher wall. Right now, the bus stop is down at the commercial stretch at the corner where the CVS and the old Meadowbrook Pharmacy is. The proposal would move the bus stop up and be sort of a turn-off of the road, which would require further encroachment, higher wall, deeper, uh, encroachment into that tree canopy. So for all those reasons, this kills trees, uh, for the benefit of a very small three-foot buffer strip. And also in, inconsistent with the, uh, comprehensive plan, we're supposed to recognize, respect, and enhance distinct characteristics of each neighborhood and respect nearby residential areas, as you'll hear from the consistent neighborhood pushback against option three, we don't think that this, uh, this proposal does that. And then finally, the comprehensive plan talks about increasing safe, convenient, and pleasant accommodations for pedestrians, bicyclists, and people with disabilities. pleasant accommodations for pedestrians, bicyclists, and people with disabilities. We have concerns that this would create two-way traffic for bikes and pedestrians on a path along Barracks Road and not be safe whatsoever, particularly when you consider the pulling out from private driveways. We strongly suggest that the project revert to option four. That was one that the Venable Neighborhood Association could support, that the Tree Commission, who you'll hear from, could support. That is the one, if you recall, that had a much smaller retaining wall, did not have the buffer strip, and would not encroach into the roadway. We'd ask that you send this back and further consideration of option four. Thank you.
And the next person is Greg. Greg Mink?
Mink.
Mink.
My name is Greg Mink. My wife, Chris, and I live at 1930 Barracks Road. We're Tim's next-door neighbor. And we moved into that home in 1982, and so we're the, we have tenure on that street. We've been there longer than any of the other residents. And Chairman Mitchell, I'm sensitive to your instructions regarding the intent and purpose of the session here tonight, but a discussion of whether or not the proposed project is consistent with the comprehensive plan must include a discussion regarding project parameters, including widths and heights. Our greatest concern is that the design work to date has not been rigorous enough to accurately predict how the chosen design, number three, will impact the tree canopy that currently graces Barracks Road. And the consultant just acknowledged that this evening, that they have not performed kind of a rigorous analysis of what happens when you start to move that retaining wall. What is the impact on those trees as it relates to the canopy? The proposed option on the table right now, as I understand it and as presented, provides for a 10-foot-wide shared pedestrian bike path to be separated by a three-foot-wide grassland. And the question, the overriding question for me and my fellow residents is, where does that 10 feet, where does that start from? And so we've done a little bit of our own homework and our own research. This past Saturday morning, Tom Gallagher, who you'll hear from shortly, my neighbor on the other side, Tom and I went out with a tape measure, and we took measurements seven different locations from Hessian all the way up to Hilltop. And this is just an observation, probably not for this group, it's more like for the highway control people. No one adheres to that 25 mile-an-hour speed limit going up Barracks Road Saturday morning. We've confirmed that. So we took some measurements, and we measured from the inside of the curb, took two measurements at seven locations. The first measurement was from the inside of the curb, so this would be the northern part of the sidewalk, and we took that to the marked white line. And then the second measurement is we took it from the same edge of the curb all the way over to what's currently a paved shoulder. And we were, and if you, if you travel down Barracks Road, you'll start to visualize this, and this will become more real when I tell you that there is, 24 feet is the narrowest width, and that's down at Hessian, and it goes all the way out to 28 feet, which is at the foot of my driveway, the second house coming up the hill. But measured across all of those locations, there is on average a three-foot difference between the edge of the sidewalk and the marked white line. So if the 10-foot shared path is from the edge of that current sidewalk, we believe that there'll be a profound negative impact on the tree canopy. However, if that 10 feet is from the edge of a consistently measured roadway set at minimum widths, which I believe we've established at 22 feet, 11 in each direction, the outcome could very well be different. So absent, in our opinion, absent a more rigorous and robust design effort, the big question for all of us right now is, how will we know the actual impact on the tree canopy, which plays right into the comprehensive plan, and how can the planning commission take any position absent this information? And just as a postscript, when we moved in...
We're beginning to run out of time.
Okay, well, I'll finish on, very quickly. When we moved in, our next-door neighbors, for longtime residents, were the Bookers, Paige and Elizabeth Booker. And we, and we had a conversation with Elizabeth shortly after moving in, and she said, "Why did you pick this location?" I said, "Well, it's just so parklight. It's just so serene. It's the canopy of the trees." And she wagged her finger at me. She said, "One day, they're going to bring all these trees down, and we hope that that day is not today." Thank you.
I'm Tom Gallagher. I live at 1920 Barracks, one more household. So I'm going to talk about the walls, retaining walls. So it's important to maintain the walls at as low a level as possible for two reasons. One is to preserve the neighborhood character, and the other is to maintain a welcoming entrance corridor to the city. And my essential point is that if the preferred option, which behind you is actually put in place, the walls are going to be higher than suggested by that. First of all, I cannot see how the walls, the average heights of the walls is going to be three feet. I think it will be more like six feet. I will explain how that happens. And the other point I would like to make is that the visual image that's presented is the best case, was taken at, that picture was taken at the intersection of Blue Ridge and Barracks. Okay, so what determines the wall light? Well, wall light is determined by how far you dig horizontally, by due to the extent, the width, the increased width of the shared route path, and the slope of the bank where you're digging it in. Okay, so if you just subtract the present sidewalk from the mixed-use path plus grass strip, you find that you have to go in nine and a half feet. But it's not quite that bad because you can in fact narrow the traffic lanes to 11 feet to slow everything down. So in fact, if you do that, you pick up about another three feet. So in fact, you have to dig in six and a half feet. And the three feet that you can move the curb, according to the measurements Greg described, is sort of uniform up and down Barracks Road. So key point is, all up and down the road, you have to dig in six and a half feet. So that means how high the wall is is simply a question of the slope of the bank. Okay, so we measured the slopes also. I won't tell you exactly how, but the seven points. And with one exception, there are 45 degrees, plus or minus two degrees. The exception is at Blue Ridge Road, which is where the picture was taken that you have. That's, this is before the project picture. That's, and if you look at that picture, you can see that the slope is shallower there. In fact, it's 29 degrees. And so in fact, where they took this picture and showed you the after the project, this is the best case, right? It never gets any better. The wall never gets any lower than this, except right at the very top. And in fact, if you then use the 45-degree slope that exists everywhere else, you wind up with a wall height of six or six and a half feet, not three feet. So most of this wall is going to be about six feet tall, not three feet tall. So in fact, this is much more appropriate for an industrial intersection than for a residential area. And so I suggest that this proposal be rejected in its present form. Thank you for your attention.
Brian, Brian Maynard.
My name is Brian Maynard. I'm the chair of the Tree Commission. I'm also a member of the steering committee for this project. I'm not going to repeat some of the comments you've heard about tree canopy. Obviously, the Tree Commission is greatly interested in this, but I want all of us, particularly the commission, but all of us, to think of the tree canopy as really green infrastructure. For any of these projects, it's not landscaping, it's not accessory, it's critical to the project, it's critical to our neighborhoods, it's critical to our city. Normally, when the Tree Commission addresses this, it's in reference to replacing trees that are being removed in a project or adding larger trees. In this case, we have a unique urban corridor. Everybody knows it who's driven that corridor. We understand that every option proposed will have some impact on the neighborhood and on the trees, but we believe that we should carefully think about the options and select the one that has the least impact on the tree canopy, on our green infrastructure. The Tree Commission voted, along with the rest of the steering committee overwhelmingly against this option, and I think that regardless of how we proceed in this project, regardless of what the planning commission and council eventually decides, that as you've heard from several of the other speakers and from several of you up here, we still have a series of questions that impact the trees. For us, those questions are a clearer mapping, so to understand which trees that are actually in good condition now are likely to be damaged. It's one thing to think about a percentage of trees that are going to be there, but if they're the least desirable trees, and we're actually putting up larger walls or impacting the larger trees, then that's obviously going to have a more significant impact on the canopy overall. The other is, there's been mention of tree replenishment. We know, we've heard tonight, that that replenishment is not going to come in the planting strip. Even if it were, there are a lot of difficulties in a three-foot planting strip, which we addressed in the written comments we've submitted. So we'd like to know more about what tree replenishment means in that corridor. Obviously, if you're replacing a large canopy tree that's 80 years old, we understand that if that tree has to go, it's not going to be replaced by the same-sized tree, so we're going to end up with reduction in canopy. We just need to know what the real clearer mapping is of this project. I would say lastly, there's a slide in the presentation near the end that references Streets That Work, the Streets That Work Plan, many of you are familiar with, and I note that on that slide, there's not a single mention of trees. And trees are part of Streets That Work. So we need to be clear as to what any of these options mean in terms of trees, and I would just reiterate that the commission, the Tree Commission, would ask you to think seriously about looking at the other options. And thank you for your time.
Thanks. Marty, Marty Bass.
My name's Marty Bass. I live at 1808 Barracks Road. I am not one of the properties that is immediately affected by the Timmins Project, but I have been vocal about problems on Barracks Road for years. The Timmins Group, I feel, has worked hard, but throughout the process, I did not think they considered the Charlottesville aesthetic. And except for widening the sidewalk, I do not think they addressed any of the perennial issues on Barracks Road. I'd like to address two issues that I think are incompatible with the comprehensive plan. First, safety. Bikes going up and down the hill on the same path is not safe. I walk my dog down there. I'm a little hard of hearing, a little elderly, and if a bike was coming down behind me, I don't think I would know it until the disaster happened. There are no traffic calming measures included in the project, except they say they're narrowing the lanes, but I think there should be other traffic calming measures. There's no attention to the difficult entry to Barracks from Buckingham and Hilltop Roads. That's a very difficult place for them to get out of and take a left, or a right for that matter. There are no measures to help pedestrians cross from one side of the road to the other. I think there should be one, say at Blue Ridge Road. And there's no fixing the ditch on the north side of the road, where, when bikes are going down on the north side of the road, if they had a curb there, and there could be a bike path that would be safer, but right now, there's a ditch on that side of the road and in their, in their renderings, I don't see that they fixed it. The second issue, I think, is aesthetics. A wall up to seven feet in a neighborhood is really going to be ugly. So I think that's a big problem. A grassy buffer that will need constant upkeep. Now, if they're taking land by eminent domain from the residents, will no longer have to take care of that sidewalk or take care of the buffer. It would have to be, have constant upkeep, I felt. And of course, the destruction of the tree canopy, we've already heard about. And to take that significant yardage from that attractive neighborhood, from neighbors that are on the south side of the road, just doesn't seem right to me. Except for having a wider and safer sidewalk, the only thing that I can see that is compatible with the comprehensive plan is bikes. And Barracks Road should not be a preferred route for bike traffic. It's dangerous going down the hill, and bikers should not be navigating the same path as pedestrians. Okay, I'll stop. Please reconsider this project so that it can be something safe, that honors our beautiful city, that doesn't ruin this attractive entrance to Charlottesville, and is something that we can all be proud of.
Thanks. Joseph, Joseph Kett. John, oh, there's Joseph Kett.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joe Kett. Since 1986, I've resided with my wife Eleanor at 128 Buckingham Road, which is at the intersection of Buckingham and Barracks. I thank the planning commission and the council for this opportunity to point out what I view as serious flaws in the design of Timmins's preferred option. Astonishingly, the Timmins Group's before-and-after drawings, which you've seen, display the impact of the preferred option on Barracks Road and depict no change before and after in the leafy canopy. Yet the drawings distributed at the November 20th Public Workshop clearly display a near Holocaust of the trees that make up the south side of the canopy. The project justifies this destruction in the name of constructing a mixed-use path for cyclists and pedestrians. I support the city's plan for creating bike-friendly infrastructure. In a previous existence, I was an avid bicyclist. I commuted for 15 years from Greenbrier to the university, back and forth. I'm very friendly to bicycles, more so 15, 20 years ago, but we'll ignore that. But this bike, mixed-use path, looks like a path from nowhere to nowhere, next to nobody. The city's own bike map draws a broken red line from just east of the intersection of Millmount and Barracks, down to the intersection of Emmett and Barracks, then up the hill and beyond to the intersection of Preston and 10th Street Northeast. And that entire area is classified by the city on the bike as challenged connection. With the planned addition of new turning lanes, the Emmett-Barracks intersection can never be made more friendly. The gradient of Barracks Road between Emmett and Buckingham Road, which at the crest is nearly 9%, explains why one very rarely sees cyclists biking uphill on Barracks. The mixed-use path won't change this. Eastbound cyclists who managed to cross the Emmett-Barracks intersection and mount the hill will find no bike lane from Buckingham Road to Preston Avenue and beyond. As for westbound cyclists, they will continue to descend on the north side of Barracks, which is a shared path with automobiles. Few, very few, I think, will like to reach the path by, the mixed-use path, by crossing the blind and dangerous intersection of Barracks with Buckingham and Hilltop, those who do risk collisions with pedestrians as they speed downhill on the south side of Barracks. Avid cyclists who wish to traverse this area will continue to prefer biking up Meadowbrook Road to Hilltop, biking from Hilltop to the Blue Ridge, to its intersection with Blue Ridge, and then Blue Ridge to Rugby Road, covering substantially the same area. And that area has a green line in the city map indicating low-stress connection. So I just can see that the preferred option survives a cost-benefit analysis. Thank you for giving me the opposition.
Hi, that was my dad. And he really did bike for 15 years. You've heard, I think, everything that has to be said here to a certain extent today. I just want to go back to the, to the question ahead of you, which in my... I just want to go back to the question ahead of you, which in my mind really rests on the idea of the preservation of neighborhood character. So I'm a landscape architect. I have a practice of 60 landscape architects in Boston. I grew up on this site. For me, the character of this neighborhood is defined, as you've heard, by the leafy canopy, but also by the ivy-clad slopes that come down to Barracks Road. This is a very quiet and calming corridor, which needs a lot of improvements. I won't say that it's perfect. It needs a lot of traffic improvements. But I think what you've heard today is that you have not been provided enough detail to evaluate the impacts of this project. So I think, for that reason alone, you should send it back. Furthermore, there's a discussion of when the tree canopy is lost, how it's replaced. I think that is actually the most poignant point here. You cannot plant a tree on a one-to-one slope. I think Brian would validate that. You simply can't get water to the tree, and they won't survive. So understanding the plan for re-establishment when there is loss has to be a part of this proposal, if you agree that the character of this street is defined by its canopy. The other thing that I think you haven't been provided enough detail on is the wall. So we heard about the 250-foot stretch of wall from a driveway to Hilltop. Based on my scaling of the map, that means that this is probably a 1,250-foot wall that we're talking about along the entire length of this stretch. Without understanding what part of that is three feet and what part of that is seven feet, which I agree with everything that's been said, that is not the character of the neighborhood today. That is really the character that we see growing up around Charlottesville, which I think we're all sad to see the loss of that neighborhood character. And the last thing I just want to touch on here is safety, which I know is not a part of your purview, but I do think it does come under the comprehensive plan. And I just want to say that you can't think about the safety of pedestrians and bicycles without first addressing the elephant in the room, which is the cars. I think there are some smart things being done in the plan about reducing the lane widths to 11 feet. I think the city should be more progressive in that. I think you should be pushing to 10 feet. Boston is going to 10 feet, Cambridge is going to 10 feet. A lot of cities today are going to 10 feet. You'll hear pushback from the buses, but they figure it out over time. And the worst of all of this, of course, is the intersection at Hilltop and Barracks Road. You're putting a bike lane in that brings people up to a point where if anyone has not taken that turn, they should go do it. You cannot see cars coming over the hill, so if you don't address the safety concern for the city, I think you're actually putting more people at risk than are at risk today, because cars making a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn off of Hilltop or Barracks will now have to navigate the two cyclists a year that ride up this road. For that alone, I think you should send this back. Thank you.
Jay, Jay.
What was his name? We didn't get your name. John.
Joseph.
I got that.
Hello, my name is Jay Heitman. I live at 516 Caroline Avenue here in Charlottesville. I've been a resident of the Charlottesville area since 1979. I graduated from CHS in 1980. I have two daughters, Robin, who lost her life in a bicycle accident in New York. Rachel, my younger daughter, is a second-year student in UVA. Last year, she was hit twice by motor vehicles in Charlottesville. I have personal experience with riding a bike up and down Barracks Road. That was the area I lived in. And on one occasion, somebody stopped abruptly to turn into Blue Ridge. Fortunately, I avoided an accident. Because of regulations in the city, you can't ride up and down the sidewalk that's on the side. And so this project would allow for better transit from the downtown area to the Barracks Road area. And I understand the, you know, desire to preserve canopy, but we need to also concern ourselves about preserving lives. I don't know if anybody that has come from that neighborhood has lost a child like I have. She was 20 years old. This didn't need to happen. Fortunately, the Charlottesville area has had only two fatalities, pedestrians last year. But as this area grows, and as people point out, the intensity of the traffic increases, so it becomes more vulnerable for those that walk, those that are disabled, those that bike. I agree with some of the comments. I don't think that the entry into that at Buckingham is reasonable. It would be nice to see that extended up to the Rugby Road area, where there's a light. That would allow for a better transition in and out of this lane. But I realize that's out of the scope of this plan. Certainly, there could be adjustments in the plan as far as width of the shared-use path, the buffer zone, and the width of the road. You know, we're talking about feet here, and I understand the significance that that has in the difference in the height of this wall. But to argue towards the character of the neighborhood and trees, you know, when my daughter, Robin, was one, I planted a Christmas tree, it was this tall. It's not 35 feet tall. That could be replaced. A lost life cannot be replaced. And, you know, this is a corridor in and out of the central area of town to the Barracks Road area. And this would be a great improvement in that particular section. So I hope that the planning commission, you know, considers those things that have been suggested by the bike-ped folks and moves in a direction that allows this project to move forward, you know, for the safety of those that live here. Thank you.
Mary, Mary Mason.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the proposed plan for the Barracks Road neighborhood. Our family lives at 1910 Barracks Road at the top of the hill. We live in a historic neighborhood, part of our city's urban forest. Sensitive revitalization of the short stretch of peaceful, beautiful neighborhood is welcomed. The city of Charlottesville has prioritized our urban environment, and in particular, the urban forests and historic neighborhoods. The proposed project affects both elements. Mr. Durdane's letter nicely outlines documentation to that effect, illustrating the city's long-term commitment to these values. This tree-lined portion of Barracks Road serves as a designated entry quarter for the city and the university, possibly the loveliest drive in the city. It is a historic university neighborhood with deep roots into the community. Removal of any portion of the bank will inevitably, irreversibly, change the natural landscape of the tree canopy into an urban hardscape. It is not a question of if, but when and how much. The landscape sacrifice is simply too costly with the proposed gain and contradicts the spirit of our city's comprehensive plan and vision. With thoughtful planning and design, improvements in safe multimodal transport along Barracks Road, still in accord with smart-scale provisions, can be achieved without sacrifice of the tree canopy or streetscape. The preferred plan, option three, is not in accord with the city's comprehensive plan. We value our city, we value our historic neighborhood, and we value our urban forests and landscapes. We recognize them as paramount in calculating the balance with proposed changes. We thank you for keeping in mind these decisions for this project to move forward. Thank you.
Mac, Mac Mason.
Good evening. My name is Mac Mason, and I live on 1910 Barracks Road, and I'm here to speak for my family and for those who live on their street. I want to thank the commission members for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, let me say that I welcome Barracks Road Improvement Project. I've lived on Barracks Road since 2007, and I believe that the tree canopy is one of the defining features of 19, or, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
For Barracks Road. We love this neighborhood, and we are thrilled that the city plans to renovate this area and make it safer for pedestrians and bikers. I've been raised in our home on Barracks Road over the years, while the crossing roads and traveling up and down the sidewalks have been sort of safe. We hope that we change the road so that we may make it safer. Yet, the cost of the trees on top of Barracks is not worth what the safety proposes. I'm so sorry. What I wish to testify is that the fact that the area is not just a vehicular thoroughfare, but a real neighborhood with real people and real homes, parents, childrens, dogs, carpools, work schedules, and school commitments. This area, the Rugby Road, Meadowbrook area, is historic and lovely. While it can be improved, and we welcome that, great intention should be taken care to ensure that the character and charm of the neighborhood are retained while these improvements are made. To that point, we have serious concerns about the recommended option three. The preferred one does not take into account the balance of forces in regard. Option three is not consistent with the city's adoptive comprehensive plan. It will ultimately destroy the large shade canopy of trees, which will destroy our neighborhood's character. And lastly, there is a paucity of detail about the actual height and visual detail of location of the retaining proposal. We strongly believe that any opinion should minimize the negative impact to the neighborhood while maximizing the improvement for our community. I respectfully request that the planning commission does not accept the preferred option. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Matt. Nina, Nina Ratri.
Ratri, that's good. Hi, my name is Nina Ratri. I live at 108 Buckingham Road. I've lived there for 11 years. I'm an avid cyclist. I've really gotten into it. It's very addictive. I'm on my third bike right now. My brother rides his bikes. He gets hit by, he has been hit by a car. My cousin, crossing Rio Road before it got improved, was hit by a car. His body totaled the vehicle. They ended up with a new car, and my cousin ended up in the hospital. So I'm really concerned about the safety of everyone. As this project exists right now, it ends at Buckingham Road. So you have to understand, when I'm at Buckingham Road and I turn left to go downhill, I have to tell my kids to be quiet, I have to roll down my window, I have to turn off my radio, and it can be raining, it could be snowing, it could be 20 degrees. I have to roll down my window to hear the cars coming up the hill, because they're not going 25. They're going 35, they're going 40. If I were to pull out and turn right, and a vehicle is traveling at 35 to 45 miles per hour, I can't get to top speed on a right-hand turn and get out of their way. My contractor's been rear-ended in that location. So as you have this planned proposal, which I'm thrilled that you guys have the forethought and the dedication to create better biking and pedestrian opportunities in this city, when you end this road to nowhere at my road, at Buckingham Road, people are going to try to get onto that sidewalk, and they can't. So the entrance ramp to the sidewalk is not on Buckingham Road. You have to go out into Barracks Road to get on the ramp to get up. That means you've got bicyclists in front of people traveling at 35 to 40 miles per hour. And remember, it's a blind spot, so those drivers flying over the hill can't see the bicyclists or the person in the wheelchair trying to get onto that sidewalk. That sidewalk, as it exists right now, from Buckingham to Howard to Rugby, is not wide enough for a bike and a person. So you have a situation where I think you're endangering lives by having them, people, you could have bicyclists in front of cars traveling at speed up Barracks Road, and there could be an increased rate of accidents in that situation. So I encourage everyone to really examine the traffic flow. I mean, the reality is, is that everyone, if they're going 25, we're all safe. But I've lived there for 11 years, and over 60% of the traffic on that road is not going 25. They're speeding. And when you widen a road, I understand that the lanes will become more narrow on Barracks Road, but when you widen the viewshed of a road, people get more confident about traveling faster. So I think my fear, I hope it's completely unfounded, is that as the viewshed widens with this wide, shared-use pathway, people will actually speed more up the hill. And I'm concerned about the speeding. Thank you very much for your time.
Jake, Jake Mooney.
Hi, thank you. Jake Mooney, 1816 Yorktown Drive. I bike a lot. I bike around the city, I bike to work. I'm comfortable a lot of the time biking in the road or in bike lanes that aren't separated from the road, but this is a spot where I wouldn't do it, because it's one of the most dangerous places to bike in the city. You know, I hear people talking about it as an attractive entrance corridor to Charlottesville, and I feel like they're talking about a different place than the one that I know, because it's a corridor that is, sorry, it's a corridor that's inhospitable to anyone who doesn't live there. And I just wonder, when you're talking about neighborhood character, if that's the type of neighborhood character that you want to be preserving. I'm sure the residents of the neighborhood like their trees. I like the trees in my neighborhood. But without a bike path, it's a beautifully wooded road that nobody can traverse without a car. I also do think it's great to hear people talk about how drivers there go too fast, because they do, and I totally agree that the car-traffic lane should be as narrow as possible. I just would say that one other way that you keep pedestrians and cyclists safe from speeding cars is by giving them paths that are protected by buffers. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Jake. Martin, Martin Chapman.
I was actually coming to talk about the Harris Street proposal. Is that the next one?
That'll be the next one, yeah, yeah.
Can I wait till?
Yeah, wait, yeah, please. Joseph. Josh, I'm sorry. Josh, Josh Karp.
Hi, I'm Joseph Karp. I'll take it. I live at 511 North First Street, and I'll just point out that unlike most commenters here, I don't live in the proposed area, which I think is relevant to the comment I'm going to make. So I used to bike, but then I had a kid, and I really like him, and I don't want him to get squashed. And so I don't bike much in town these days at all, and if I did, I wouldn't bike on Barracks or Preston, because as almost everyone said, it's scary. There are slopes, people speed, and I just, I wouldn't consider biking with my kid. I probably wouldn't walk with him there. And it's, as people have said, it's a very pleasant neighborhood. I like to see it from my car. But as we've heard really, really tragically from an earlier commenter, if you bike there, there's a good chance over time, people are going to get hit, and people are going to die. And I like trees as much as anybody. I like a neighborhood that looks pleasant, but I would rather preserve the lives of our kids and our citizens more than the trees and more than the neighborhood character. If we can do both, let's do both. But if we only get to have one, let's make it, let's make it be life or protecting, human life. I also pulled up the comp plan during the presentation, and the comp plan says we'd like to implement the Bike-Ped Master Plan, which says, and I'm quoting from one of the big headlines, "Walking and biking will be practical, convenient, safe, and pleasant for all in Charlottesville." And that's not the case today, and it definitely is not the case in the neighborhood we're talking about. And so I was happy to see that these diagrams, especially the option that has been recommended, in particular to see a separated bike path, because I look at that and I think I'd feel safe with my kid biking there or walking there. So to everyone's comments previously about preserving trees, let's do our homework and preserve as many trees as possible, but let's, while doing that, build the bike path and build it with a physical separation between drivers and everybody else. Thanks.
And that brings us to the end of the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please.
My name is Holly Mason. You heard from two of my children. I apologize for being late. I know it's already been extensive comments. This is a very difficult issue, being somebody who lives on this road. I have three teenagers who have walked up and down, who've crossed this road for fear of life. We almost were run over by police. We almost were run over by a police officer at night who did not see us at the Blue Ridge intersection. We've had many close calls. I now have three teenage drivers who have to accelerate at a very fast speed getting out of my driveway, and I have been pulled twice doing the same thing to get out of harm's way, and immediately had to brake, accelerate and brake to get out, just to be out of harm's way. There is, there is big problems on this road. And to the gentleman, I have lost a child as well. It is a horrible thing. I'm very sorry for your loss. The challenge before our community is to figure out how to keep cars, drivers, pedestrians, bikers, everybody safe. And that's no small task, and this location is very difficult. I wish you luck. I do think that the option on the table needs more detail for many, many reasons. I would like to see pedestrians and bikers safe. Surely, that is most important. Traffic has to be addressed. There are 50, 60 mile-per-hour drivers on this road, and before you do anything for bikers and walkers, it is my family's belief, and my children's belief, and any neighbor's belief, that you have got to slow traffic, please. I mean, I would, I would beg you to think about doing some traffic calming. It is very, very dangerous on this road. I just, that's, that's all I want to say. I appreciate you're doing something to this stretch. I welcome it. I think it's important. And thank you very much, very much.
Thanks. Anyone else like to speak?
Hello. My name's Nancy Summers. I live at 1201 Blue Ridge Road, right at the corner of Barracks and Blue Ridge, and I was so pleased to hear everyone contribute what I thought was very important, comments about the issues that are faced by people on Barracks Road. I think Barracks Road is truly a beautiful road, historic road. It's a dangerous road. Everything that everyone has said is, to some degree, true, and I'd like to acknowledge that. But I think we have to realize that we have to take, we have to do no harm. We have to have a minimalist approach to what we do to the road, so that people can be safe, so that it can be beautiful, so that when people enter Charlottesville, they know they're in a very special place. It is true, it's mostly, right now, it's for cars. And it can be improved, but it can be improved in such a way that damage to the neighborhood character is not done, if you do no harm to the tree canopy, or do the minimal. And it can be done. It just has to be thought of in that regard. And I have to, I have to say that I think that it does matter, the historical character of the road, the historical character of the neighborhood. I'd also, and one of the people has suggested over and over, in terms of calming traffic on Barracks Road, and I don't know why people don't think it's important, that we put signs on places like on Preston Avenue that suggest that people turn down Rugby instead of always going down Barracks Road. It's a great route. I believe that Mr. Soli Yates told me he saved 10 minutes by following my suggestion. We don't need to funnel all traffic to Barracks Road. There are alternative routes. Anyone who knows the work of Cass Sunstein and the work of, you know, Nudge, you put signs and say you don't always have to go down Barracks Road. That in itself would be a traffic calming measure. I think that's about the only thing that hasn't been said that I might say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I hope we can do the right thing for our city.
Thanks. Anyone else like to speak? Going once, going twice. Public comment is closed. Right, commissioners, what do we think? The question is, does this, do these proposed improvements, are they consistent with the comprehensive plan as it exists today? So.
Can I ask a question about that?
Please.
For you.
Thank you.
And I want to be, because this is a, again, we've got all of this information, and we talked about this in the pre-meeting, all of these details, and the question literally before us is, improvements to be made here, is that consistent with the comp plan? Because I don't think any of these designs have been fleshed out. So that's our question. We've gotten money for that. Going in a direction, obviously, to slow traffic is a thing on this road, and I've traveled it. And I will tell you that I have a friend of mine, you all probably know him, so I won't embarrass him, who rides his bike, and we used to meet, we used to have to take our kids for summer camp down at the end of the hill, and I have seen him ride down and up these hills from Belmont with two kids on the same bike. And you wouldn't look at him and think he was that much of a beast, but I couldn't do it. But he made it there, and then he would ride back up the hill with the other kid, drop one kid off, ride back up the other hill with a kid and drop them off. So, yeah, and every day I was like, but he did it. So I don't think the hills are too much to traverse if they're safe and we get to the right part. And look, folks, first, we have a, we have traffic speed problems all over this city. And so I'm hoping that council or whomever can hear this is, is listening to the pleas of the, of the public here for this traffic. But it is a problem, and it's a problem in a lot of different places. And so we can't not look at land use planning, because we've got an issue of lack of enforcement in another area. I just want to say that, but I want us to focus on the comprehensive plan. So.
So Bill, you run that street a couple times a week. Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think I agree with what Chairman, or Commissioner Green said. First, I think it's really commendable that the city got this grant, the Smart Scale Grant. It's the fourth one we've seen. These have a five- or six-year time limit to get to the end of construction, so we'll be back here in five years, seeing this great transformation in our city on these different areas. I think, you know, obviously, it's a, it's a place, it's an area that's close to the university. We get a lot of students, faculty, staff that use that corridor. And I think, you know, in general, I agree with a lot of what I heard, that, yeah, this is a worthy project. It would be great if it could extend further up the hill, but, you know, we have a budget constraint with that. On this particular project, doesn't mean there can't be more projects in the future. And I think it really goes towards putting another piece in that bike ped network that we're trying to establish here in the city. I am, you know, I understand the worry of losing some of the nicer trees along the corridor, and it sounds like there may, you know, we're at an early stage, there may be further design considerations that can kind of get those heights of the retaining walls down and things like that, but still maintain adequate safety. One thing, you know, on the 10-foot shared-use path that will probably, you know, come forward is how do you mark that so it is safe to a bike and pedestrian traffic? I mean, other municipalities do it all the time, so I think we can probably work through those things.
Mrs. Stolzner.
Yeah, so I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I heard a lot of really, I think, important comments. To Ms. Green's point about the comprehensive plan itself, I think it's important to point out that the Bike Ped Master Plan, which is a component or an addendum or an appendix to the comp plan, brings this as the eighth most important bike improvement route in the city out of 20. So the comp plan really does see us doing work in this area. So I actually walked down all the way up to Barracks Road Shopping Center after the place meeting we had on this. And I had to say, the thing that struck me is how, well, first of all, narrow and kind of dangerous seeming it is to walk down there, but especially how incredibly loud it was of just cars going, definitely much faster than 25 miles per hour, mere 18 inches away from you, and it feels hostile and threatening. And I think the plan as proposed would do, would make a pretty significant difference in that. And I think one person mentioned how if you make kind of the view of the road wider, people will go faster. I just wanted to call out something that they went over with us in place, which was that, that's true. And if you have the option without the buffer, that ends up with a perceived very wide road. But if you have a buffer, then you can put light poles in there and other signage, and those vertical elements reduce the perceived width of the road. And with that, plus the lane narrowing, plus I think it's important to point out that it's not just that they're shrinking the lanes and taking, you know, the little bit they shrunk, they're taking the whole north shoulder off, so the center line of the road itself is moving up. So when you're talking about, you know, measuring the distance across the road, the thing that is the road itself now will be moved up to squeeze in, you know, that buffer without taking as much of that slope. And so I think it is a good plan, and I think it certainly is in accord with the comp plan.
So as I look at the proposal and the comp plan, I believe it'd be grossly irresponsible to not move forward on the grounds of safety for all of our citizens, acknowledging the beautiful urban forest and what the neighborhood and that road were 30 years, 40 years ago when I first drove on it. But there's a lot more people living in the city now. And we have, we're up here representing all the people. And the only thing that I don't like about the plan, that I don't see a lot of creativity in traffic calming methods that, in other communities, that we're trying to preserve trees, building islands around trees, route, you know, there are some really creative ways to preserve old trees that are very expensive, but it's doable. So I think as you move forward on this, that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Even if it's a public-private city tree commission, throw in a couple of really expensive traffic calming, tree-preserving options on this stretch, and you might come up with something remarkable.
I do think that it's definitely in line with our comprehensive plan, the streets that work also, making our city multimodal. My only personal thought with this would be is that we look a little bit more in the option that we use. I think we need to separate pedestrians and bicyclists, and that they also need a buffer from cars as well. But otherwise, I look forward to moving forward with the plan.
I spend quite a bit of time on this corridor with my infant daughter, and generally, I am a bicyclist, but not on this corridor, because I value her safety more than my own. I, because I was afraid to ride a bicycle, I walked the entire length with her in a buggy, and thinking that we would, I could talk at her and it would have a sort of a wonderful time with her, but she couldn't hear me, because it was too noisy. And it occurred to me that if I did this regularly, her hearing would be damaged for her entire life. This corridor has serious problems, and we should improve it. I see enormous conformance with the comprehensive plan.
So in our packet, we've been given, as commissioners, a number of goals from the comprehensive plan that we're supposed to consider as we look at this application. And in my mind, it fails to adequately comply with two of those important goals. One is the environment. Goal 2.2, expand and protect the overall tree canopy. The entrance corridor, goal 8.4, use street trees landscaping to provide shade. And goal, transportation goal, 1.1, provide a shared path that is safe for pedestrians and bicyclists. I think the way the shared path terminates at the top, across from Hilltop, is irresponsible. And I know that we, this is within the perimeter of our study area, but I think something has to be done other than just to stop it. Something else must be possible. And, and then I think that there has not been adequate, adequate study of the options and what they mean to the trees, the canopy. What would it mean to not have the buffer? I think the buffer is a, I doubt that it would ever be planted with anything that could stay there. It's going to be just a mud, it's too dark there, and the perception is it's going to be just part of the path. You would still have lamps and vertical elements on the side with or without the buffer. So I really question the need of the buffer, and I'd like to know what happens, how many trees we lose as a result of putting that buffer in. I don't think the study has been done to be able to come to a conclusion. So I'm very disappointed with what I see here, and I don't think it complies with the comprehensive plan.
Any comments from council?
I have a couple of questions that urge me after hearing the presentation. First is, I gather from the materials that were given to us, that the right-of-way along this area is 45 feet wide. That's what your diagram says.
Yeah, so to answer that question, the right-of-way along the corridor varies parcel to parcel. It's not consistent. So to say that it's 45 feet consistently along the corridor would not be accurate.
Okay, the, looking at the diagrams, at least the diagram for option three, it looks like the width of the improvements would be about 36 feet wide. Is there a comparable number for options one, two, and four? A comparable cross-section?
Yeah, there are, and those are, as I mentioned earlier, everything from prior meetings is available on the project website. I will say that option, our preferred option, does limit the extent of right-of-way take to the maximum extent possible. Just to clarify a couple things real quick, too, as well, it was referenced multiple times tonight that the city was moving forward with option three. That is not the case. They are moving forward with a hybrid option, three and four. Option three had a five-foot buffer space. The preferred option has a three-foot buffer space. So I just wanted to clarify that. Couple other things real quick. There are plans in place currently. City is working with a consultant to come up with a striping plan for Barracks Road from Hilltop to Rugby. I know that has been brought up a couple times tonight as the trail is terminating to nowhere, at the top there at Hilltop, Buckingham. We have plans in place to add bicycle, improve bicycle facilities in that area.
And then one other question, I guess. I note, if you look at the north side of Barracks Road, at least from, let's say, from Blue Ridge down to Hessian, we're dealing mainly, not entirely, there's one house in the wood, we can even decide, but we're dealing mainly with backyards where the houses are a good distance away. Is there any thought of, at least in that area, perhaps edging the road a little bit more to the north so as to minimize the impact on the people on the south?
Yeah, great question. It's something we explored early on. The majority of the utilities along the corridor are on the north side of the street, so to shift the physical roadway to the north would heighten the budget extremely. In this instance, you're looking at having to relocate every utility along the corridor. I think Lori had mentioned earlier that we are shifting the lanes along the corridor to the paved shoulder that's currently there, so we were able to gain some, some existing space there. But in terms of physical shifts, we don't anticipate that.
And finally, is there, is there magic to 11? And finally, is there, is there magic to eleven feet versus ten feet? Is there a design standard we're dealing with there at some point?
Yeah, I think it goes back to, you know, buses and larger vehicles, particularly emergency access. That's something that we like to incorporate in all of our projects. We have members of police and fire on our steering committees, and it's very important to them that we try to keep those lanes at a width that is, that can accommodate those larger vehicles when needed.
Lloyd, I think if you were able to go to this map in the, I was looking at that same thing about the right-of-way, why we were keeping that up the north side. There's already, the city's already acquired a fifteen-foot strip reserved on the south side as well, and I think it is utilities. But you can't read it on this or our materials, you have to go to that website, and you can get that much more. You can zoom in and see the actual words, which was helpful.
Talk to the lady question then. How much, how much do we, how much right-of-way do we expect to end up taking along this? How much would it?
That was a question I was about to ask, so if we've already got that fifteen feet.
Yeah, Brian can correct me with, if I'm wrong. We anticipate needing, there's eleven parcels along the corridor. We're thinking, what Brian, approximately ten feet or so for each.
It varies, obviously. I would estimate fifteen to twenty feet on average. Some areas may be less than fifteen, some areas more. But generally, depending on how much we're able to move the road to the north and utilize as much of that pavement as we can, that area may only be closer to ten, twelve feet that we need. But in areas where it's pretty tight already, that area may be more right. So it varies, but gen, in general terms, that's what I'm saying.
And is that distance from the edge of the existing roadway or the edge of the city's existing easement?
That is, no, that's from the edge of the existing roadway there to, it can stay entirely within the existing city easement that's in place.
Thanks.
So we already own the easement. What you're saying is you'd just be taking whatever.
It's not an addition to that easement.
Right.
So it is within the easement that was found.
So we're not taking by eminent domain any more land? It just may be, it's, it's the yard?
Yes.
Right. We already own the land. People are just utilizing it right now for their own yard.
Right.
Okay. Does that make sense?
There's a prescriptive easement on the existing.
That's what I was seeing, that fifteen feet.
So in total, from the center line of the road, it's thirty feet of either prescriptive easement, fifteen feet prescriptive, or fifteen-foot city easement.
Okay.
Total of thirty feet. Based on the preferred option and some of the other modifications that we made, we think we can largely stay within the limits of that. You know, there are some areas like the bus stops and things like that we go outside of, but generally speaking, yes.
I have a question about the, the time limitations on the VDOT grant and where we are in that proposal and what the, what the actions as a commission might do to jeopardize
We'll have the scheduling diagram, but Kyle's gonna know a little bit better about the timing of next steps.
Yeah, so as I mentioned, we were awarded the grant 2018. That starts from when you sign that agreement with VDOT, starts the window. Luckily, we realized this project is a priority. We requested for some funding to be accelerated, which allowed us to start this project about a year or two earlier than we anticipated. So as of now, we're in good shape. But any holdup in that process can, can jeopardize the project. I will note that once you are out of that five- to six-year time window, VDOT does have the ability to rescind funds, which the city would be on the hook for, to repay any engineering or design work to date for that, as well as, you know, not have a project move forward.
It's not just about the money with that. Let's be clear. If we rescind on funds and give them back and pay them back, that looks bad on all of our smart scale projects in the future, too. That will weigh against anything that we, we go for. We've been fortunate, being on the NPL Tech meeting, in that we've been fortunate with the funding we've gotten with some projects.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm not sure if it's the case now, but I know VDOT is planning to move towards a model where localities are judged on how well they deliver projects. And if we don't deliver projects on time and on budget, that jeopardizes any, you know, funds we may get in the future.
So any more comments from council? So once again, the question, oh, did you have something? Okay. Once again, the question we've got to answer is, does the general character of the proposed improvement of this preliminary design, preliminary design comply with the existing comp plan? There is, there is much work that needs to be done, and I think that the feedback that we've gotten from the folks who bike around the city, the folks who walk around the city, the folks who live in, in the area, is feedback that we need to take into, to account when we move from where we are in the winter to when we move to the detailed design and the detailed engineering. So there's much work yet to be done. But I do believe that the vision, I believe that the vision of, of what these, what this application is attempting to do does in fact meet with the comp plan.
With that, I will move that the proposed Barracks Improvement Project concept located on Barracks Road between Emmett Street and Buckingham Road in the city of Charlottesville to determine if the general character and extent of the proposed improvements are substantially in accord with the city's adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. Ms. Creasy, would you poll the board?
Yes. Mr. LaHendron?
No.
Mr. Soliates?
Yes.
Ms. Dowell?
Mr. Heaton?
Yes.
Mr. Stolinsberg?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Yes. We will recommend that we move forward with this to council.
I do hope we look at that not terminating at the top of that hill.
I hope so, too.
That is, yes. But right now, that's the scope we have, so.
Ms. Creasy, will this come back to us?
I believe there's a touch point later in the process. Is there, is there a timeframe, maybe?
I'm not sure if there's exactly an approval that is needed. Obviously, we could come to a work session and present an update, but.
And we will have Mr. Soliates attending the, the committee meetings to provide updates to the group as well.
As the schedule indicated earlier, that Brian showed, we're still ways out from the sixty percent design, so hopefully by year's end, we'll have a, a check-in with some more detail.
And is the intent for the, the extra part to be concurrent with the this or later or another smart scale?
I don't.
Just maybe sometime?
I'm not sure.
It was the question about the extension from the top of the hill. So that's not necessarily related with this project. We wouldn't do it until this one was in place. And that was, it's really just pavement striping. We already had a striping plan in place that went from Rugby towards Washington Park. So it's really just, you know, filling in this gap. And then, you know, whether either this project gets done first or we repave Preston, whichever kind of happens first, we'll, we'll do some restriping in there.
Okay, thanks.
Is that one area from here, this termination to Preston, since we know this is a corridor? Is that something that we'll be putting together for smart scale funding, potential?
So, so there's currently no plans to extend a multi-use path all the way there. It would be on-street bike lane from.
But is there, is there any plans to potentially ask for?
It is, that section is not currently in the plans for, I guess, prioritization for smart scale. We have a lot of other with the Fifth Street corridor plans, the West Main Street and everything else, the, the other priorities and the Streets That Work Plan that I don't see this one, us going for smart scale funding on this one, you know, with that.
I would.
What about folding into the Tenth and Grady proposal for Revenger?
Commissioners, I like to remind us that we voted on this. We should be moving forward. It's, I'm just saying, we have to be respectful of other people's time. This should have been done under questions come, in section.
But we do have a situation where we're doing just what we do all over this city is let me build a sidewalk to here, stop it, and then have nothing, and then build a sidewalk.
But we also had that moment when we were discussing before we voted. Thank you.
I would still like for us to take a look at that, since we've got such a center at Tenth and Grady, and we've got that area that we are improving, proving with the plan.
Okay, good. We can take a look at it.
And with that, we are, as you suggested, we are moving on.
Thank you.
All right, the next application is SP 1900010. The property is located at 1221, 1223, and 1225 Harrison Street. The property is currently is home industrial corridor. In this zoning, you're allowed to do multifamily development as long as there's also some sort of mixed-use development or mixed-use building related to the property. By right, you, the, the owner, builder, developer is allowed to do four stories. By right, the developer, the owner, builder is allowed to do twenty-one dwelling units per acre. Seville Business Park LLC is requesting an S U P. This S U P will cover approximately 2.5 acres of land. The building that they'd like to build there will rise six stories. That is two stories above by right. It will hold one hundred and five units. You do the math, that's forty-three dwelling units per acre. Again, that's twenty-two units above what is by right. On the ground floor, there will be thirteen thousand square feet of retail space. And I believe the, the, the plan is a garage for parking, or parking will be, will be built in beneath the building. And Mr. Huskau, you, you've got this one.
I do. Members of the commission, my name is Brian Huluska. I'm principal planner for the city of Charlottesville, Department of Neighborhood Development Services. Before you is a special use permit at the properties as stated by Chairman Mitchell. This is industrial, industrial corridor zoning, which is somewhat unusual to come in front of you. I don't see a whole lot of applications in property zone industrial corridor. So industrial corridor does measure height by stories. Four stories, if you go to section thirty-four dash eleven oh one or eleven hundred of our zoning ordinance, four stories cannot exceed fifty feet in height. Six stories cannot exceed seventy feet in height. The applicant's proposal is a six-story building. As shown in your packet, there is a maximum height of, they kind of show us a height of actually sixty feet with their six stories. The special, so the special use permit is for the additional two stories in height as well as an increase of residential density up to forty-three dwelling units per acre on the site. The maximum allowed in industrial corridor is, that you can request is sixty-three units per acre. The proposed building is roughly a one hundred and sixty-six thousand square foot building, contains parking in the structure, underneath the structure, and several different places of the site. Fronts on both Allied Street and Harris Street. So this building kind of stair steps up the hill. There's about a forty or fifty-foot difference in grade between Allied and Harris, and so the building is kind of aimed at responding to that. Couple of points that are not in your staff report that we, in the past week, that have come up that we want to mention. One is the site is subject to the critical slope ordinance. There are critical slopes on this site in part of its proximity to a waterway that kind of cuts through the site. If you've been out to this cul-de, you know, the cul-de-sac in the end of Allied, you've seen a waterway that's in a culvert. That waterway is designated on our map, and so any, any slopes within two hundred feet of that waterway do qualify under a critical slope ordinance. So the applicant would need to seek a critical slope waiver prior to the construction of the building that they've shown. I do want to state that the special use permit sets a maximum height, it's a maximum density, doesn't automatically guarantee that the building shown before you would be built. Staff recommended conditions don't tie the applicant to this specific building, and part of that is out of concern for reengineering or any kind of redesign. So that critical slope situation may end up reducing the size or unit count of the building. One hundred and five units is the maximum under forty-three dwelling units per acre. I do want to note that the site is, does comprise of two buildings on Harris Street, but it also includes 221 Harris Street, which is the Habitat Store. So the site is almost two and a half acres. As a result of that, one of the questions that came up in the pre-meeting was about 3412, the affordable housing ordinance that we have currently, and what would the, what would we potentially get out of that at the building permit stage? Obviously, these aren't final numbers, but based on the applicant's package, I was able to run the numbers while, during the break, we could anticipate either three units of affordable housing onsite or offsite, or a donation to the Affordable Housing Fund or in lieu of payment to the housing fund, I shouldn't say donation, in lieu of payment of thirty, uh, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So that would be roughly what we're talking about. Part of the reason that, for that, those numbers, those may seem a little low, but part of the reason for that is because, like I said, the site itself is about, is over two and a half acres. So the FAR, a large part of this building is, it takes a large amount of this building before you hit 1.0 floor area ratio because of the amount of area that's included within it. But still, those would be the numbers under 3412. As we stated in the pre-meeting, 3412 is a zoning requirement. It's triggered by the granting of a special use permit on the property. It is something that is, we discuss all through the site plan process and ultimately is resolved at the building permit stage, not at this stage. So those are the additional items. I do want to review the conditions that have been suggested in here and touch on one of them in particular. Condition 1A is, is a condition that we've used in the past, just to make sure that the parking design, as you see in here, is generally incorporated into the final project. If an applicant is proposing underground parking underneath the building, we want to make sure that's memorialized. The 1B is intended to kind of lock in the height as it's shown. They show a maximum, kind of a maximum plane of five hundred and ten feet above sea level in their drawings. So we've asked that, we kind of suggested that be memorialized. That is ten feet lower than the code would allow, so that is kind of, we're assuming that's kind of as a voluntary reduction, in part to address the massing of this building. It is a very large building on Harris Street. Harris Street is mostly one-story building, so this is a deviation from it. Pulls more from Allied where there are multi-story buildings. Finally, there is a traffic study proposed in condition two, and this relates to the proximity of this project to the intersection of McIntyre Road and Harris Street. That is an intersection that has been identified by city staff as being kind of problematic now. The queuing of that, of the people trying to make the movement towards the bypass or even back towards McIntyre does tend to back up the hill of Harris Street, and they've indicated that while they, the long-term plan has always been to look at that intersection, the construction of this building would kind of accelerate that because it adds probably, and during the peak hour, you're talking about probably in order of fifty additional trips going that direction, even if you split the traffic fifty-fifty on Harris. So that's gonna back up almost, probably to the top of the hill, and we're gonna start seeing further impact to that. I will say that the McIntyre-Harris intersection has some topographic challenges to it. There are some, you know, some ideas that have been floated out there in the past about, you know, potentially, you know, roundabouts, traffic circles there. Harris is extremely steep coming down the hill. You can't really make grade up. Coming back up the hill, you, I don't know, you'd have to cut down half the neighborhood to get the grade back up or do a lot of retaining walls. So that limits our ability somewhat. One topic we've kind of thrown out there is, you know, the applicant in this situation owns all of the land in the McIntyre Business Park. So one of the pieces there is that kind of entryway right, right, right before that intersection. So we have kind of chatted with them about, you know, having them take a look at that. So that doesn't really pertain to this. It's just gives you an idea of kind of the larger discussion that's happening with the traffic here, but this. But this, the condition here is that they would do a preliminary traffic study. They would scope that with a traffic engineer and submit that as a part of their site plan. And we would have a further discussion about whether or not the roads are adequate to support this building and what we can do about that as we move forward. With that, I'm happy to take any questions, and the applicant obviously has a presentation they would like to go through.
Couple of questions on the FAR thing. So for me, looking at the site plan, it doesn't look like any of the building footprint is on that 1221 Allied parcel. Does that still count for like the lot area, even, even though none of the building's on it?
The, there is a section in our ordinance, in the commercial section, which is where the industrial corridor resides, that specifically talks about mixed-use sites and the ability to kind of assemble them out of multiple parcels. What the applicant is doing by, by submitting this special use permit is they are kind of foregoing any residential density. Should they hit 105 units in this building, they're foregoing any residential density on 1221 in the future. They are a contiguous site, so it does meet the definition of a mixed-use development site in that section of the code. But you're right.
And so would the Habitat Store itself at least count for that FAR? So the floor area of the store would add?
The, I believe the way we do the calculations, I believe commercial space is excluded or counted at a different rate, but I would, it's something we'd have to work out in that. That was, that was a thought that dawned on me as I was going in, I don't know the square footage of it. So this is just based on the new building that I see here. That-
So that's like a lower bound of what we get, probably?
Yes, yes. If the, yeah. If the Habitat Store does count, that's a little different, but it is a totally commercial building. I don't believe that counts in our calculations. I believe it's the residential portion of above 1.0 FAR.
A few questions on this. On affordable housing, Mayor Walker emailed the planning commission concerned about displacement from this site in connection with the West Second Proposal. There was affordable housing proposed as part of that on, on Harris Street. Can you help me understand that?
I was involved in the discussion on West Second, was the planner for that project. At no time were we discussing any of these properties with the applicant. I believe they were talking about an alternative site on Harris that was much closer to Preston Avenue. The, there has been, in, in frequent conversations with the applicant here, there's been a kind of a broader discussion about Harris and what it's kind of evolving into as a land use and the kind of infrastructure we have on there and the kind of services we have for, you know, what is now becoming residents on this area. It was primarily an industrial and commercial corridor that we're now starting to see residential development on, and how do we link those residents to the rest of the city without using their cars? So there, you know, some, I think there's some appetite for increased pedestrian improvements in that area and also potentially looking at, I know that the, the owners along the road have mentioned a potential bus service down Harris, that that might be a route that Kat needs to look into. So that, I hope that answers your question. Did I leave anything out?
That, that does help me. That's sort of a linked question. You mentioned this is industrial zoning, which I think of as Lytech zoning. That's sort of the, the only zoning that we've really been able to produce affordable housing effectively on in quantity and uniquely so in our region. Are we, are we losing affordable housing by putting up this housing?
I don't believe there's any housing currently on the site. So there's no, no loss of units. There is a, a residential-style building on the site, 1225. If you look at it, looks like a house, but I don't believe that it's being, you know, currently used as a residence. The applicant can certainly clarify that since they own it. There, 1223 is clearly a commercial building. It's used as a commercial building as a parking lot out front. So there's, yeah, so I don't, no, no loss of units in this area. I'm not sure, you know, an opportunity cost, if you looked at it, you know, there's obviously the opportunity potentially for more density in the future because the zoning does allow the applicant to seek potentially up to 63. And I know they did contemplate that at one point. So they may, you know, they could seek an amendment to this SUP in the future if the Habitat Store was a site that they were looking at. I don't think they are, but they can certainly tell us about that.
Thank you.
Are we ready to hear from the applicant or are there any more questions, Johnny?
All right.
Good evening, commissioners. That was a pretty good summary, Brian. I feel like I have nothing left to present. But I do want to give you an overview of the project from our perspective, and I'll try to keep it short. I know it's been a long night already. So I'm Chris Ruggilio, Development Manager at Woodard Properties. And as it's already been said, we're requesting an SUP for 54 dwelling units and two stories of height. The project totals, again, 105 residential units, 130 parking spaces, and 7,000 square feet of commercial space. Totals are, these totals are approximate right now. Some of the program inside the building is moving and evolving as we think more about the project. Just to get everybody, everybody's probably pretty familiar with McIntyre Plaza and this end of Harris Street, but the site, site there is in yellow, surrounded on the east side, or the west side, sorry, by the sob lot utilized by the sob repair shop. The Habitat Store also across the Service Road to the west. To the north, we have a new, our new three-building development that's residential, commercial, mixed-use at the end of Allied Street, McIntyre Circle. And to the east, along Allied Street, we have McIntyre Plaza. Zooming out a bit.
Could you go back?
Yes. Do you have a question?
My thought was 44 dwelling units, 54, 44.
I think the math works out between 21, 21 units an acre and 43. It's about, it's about doubles the density. I think we go from 50, about 51 units to 105, 105 units.
Okay, who is that?
Yeah. I have to check myself. I'm not that great at doing math in my head, but-
21 units per acre, America.
Right.
Or two acres.
But I thought you guys were going up to 156.
No, what, so the request is for, the building right now as it stands is 105 units. Yep. So that would be about 43 units an acre over 2.4 or 5 acres. Yep. So zooming out, zooming out, we put this together, actually Tim has put this together to help us visualize what, you know, the project's central location and what's available within a five, 10, 15-minute walk, as shown by the colored circles here. I do want to point out a couple of things. The residences in this building would obviously have the nearly 100 businesses at McIntyre Plaza right out, right out their door. Most of those businesses are small businesses and locally owned. We do have access to a lot of community space outside, outside their apartments in this building. The Greenway is a couple of blocks away, takes you up to the paved portion of the Vanna Trail, McIntyre Park. Also can take you downtown. And if you follow some of these yellow lines, you guys all know the routes around town. But the downtown mall and the Dairy Central Development is still less than a mile away. And I know there's not, you know, the cat, there's not a cat bus stop within the immediate vicinity of the building. We feel like everything going on at McIntyre Plaza and this building included would be a good reason to work with the city to get a cat stop closer to the end of Harris Street. So hopefully that's something we can work towards. And for residents who have to use a car, there's quick access on and off the bypass. So Brian gave a pretty good overview about the site. This is the existing site conditions. There are two existing structures, as we mentioned, a small commercial building at 1223 Harris and a residential market rate duplex at 1225 Harris. And the footprint of our new building is shown there in blue. So I'll just quickly walk you through the levels, top-down. Levels five and six in the red and yellow would be the additional levels allowed by the SUP, residential, residential use and with some amenity space on level six. Below that, levels two to four in the green would be residential use again. And level one, which is on Harris Street grade, Harris Street level, would primarily be parking and commercial frontage along, along Harris Street. So moving down under the Harris Street grade and under level one, we have four, four levels under the building. As Brian mentioned, these, we've designed these levels to step down following the topography and the grade from Harris Street down to Allied Street. We did this for a couple of reasons. It's less disruptive to the topography, obviously. It also gives us the ability to have entrance and exits for vehicles, bicycles, to each level of parking, which allows us to eliminate some of the interior ramping on these, in these parkings, which maximizes the use, the efficiency of the space and number of parking spots we can include in the same area. So I think it's good, good design from that perspective. So these, these G levels primarily be, like I said, parking, some commercial use. We'll have commercial frontage on Allied Street as well. I do, these plans are evolving somewhat as far as the program inside the building footprint. I do want to point out something that's a little different than your, the application package is the orange drop-off, what we're calling a drop-off area for residents to meet a guest or meet the pizza guy, take, catch a cab, activity that we'd want, not want on Harris Street. Couple of 3D perspectives here. The ones on the left coming up the hill from, coming up the hill on Harris, Harris Street, looking at the front of the building. And then the images on the right from the back of the building on the north side at the end of Allied Street. Top shows you by right height and the bottom shows you the additional height with the SUP. To me, it's kind of hard to pick out the additional two levels, but that's subject to opinion. So again, some aerial perspectives here, and I do, you know, do want to point out the bottom-left image shows the two additional stories of the SUP. We are trying to use some transitional volumes in the massing design, step the building down towards Allied Street to a scale that's more consistent with some of the other, you know, buildings across Allied Street. And we understand, you know, this project's not subject to architectural review or corridor review. And we just want you to know that we, we've been approving McIntyre Plaza over the last 10 years. Here are some examples. Top-left is at the end of Allied Street, is the old Sears warehouse that was then Gaston Wyatt. And in the bottom-left, you can see what it is now. So I think we, we care about what the building looks like, so we, you know, feel like we're going to do a good job with the, the appearance of the structure. I don't have a before picture of this, probably it was before drones, but off to, off, off to the left, you can see the red arrow where the new building would be. And we see this as a continuation of McIntyre Plaza, would be part of this community. And between the red dots, the city's looking at adding a sidewalk. One doesn't exist there now. We're working with the city, possibly potentially underground utilities and include some street lighting, maybe at a pedestrian scale, would really, I think, improve and make this section of Harris more pedestrian-friendly. So in summary, you know, we think there are a lot of good reasons why Charlottesville, we think the Charlottesville community would benefit from this project. It's mixed-use and residential density in an appropriate place. Location supports sustainability principles. It's going to enhance the appearance of the existing, underutilized site and the streetscape on Harris. It's also just going to support a lot of local business owners. Any questions?
So I just have one question that I asked us earlier. Of the units you've proposed, how many affordable units or what's your plans on providing affordable housing on this site?
Right. So for this building, we are committed to meet what the ordinance requires. I will say, Woodard, Woodard Properties as a company runs, or owns and manages more than 100 affordable housing units across the city. And we accept housing choice houses at any of our apartments, so. But this building in general, we're committed to meeting the ordinance.
And when you say meeting the ordinance, just for clarification, like, I guess, let me go deeper into my question. Are you currently going to provide units or pay into the fund, or have you gotten there yet?
So I, it's hard, it's hard to say right now. You know, we, I'd like to learn a little bit more about the project costs and reserve that decision till later on in the project design and as it develops. But I think we're open to either option. I know a lot of people prefer the units in the building. I think we're definitely open to looking at that, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Okay. So the duplex that's there on site now, it's not occupied?
It is occupied. It's a market rate duplex.
Gotcha, okay. And so I know in this image, kind of up on the upper right, there's like a stairwell to get from, you know, near Seville Coffee up to the Birdwood neighborhood?
Yes.
Will there be a similar way to go from the bottom to, up to the top where this development will front on Harris Street in these designs? Like through, like a stairwell or something through your building as it steps up? Because there's a grade change between-
Yes.
-the bottom-left and down there, right?
Yes. So you will, you will be able, we work, we would work to navigate pedestrians through, through all parts of the building footprint. Is that, is that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess my question is, would there be open access to non-residents to go up like there is in the back of the complex?
Most likely not. They would have to-
Go up this new sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. And then I noticed you guys have a big courtyard cutout in the back facing the Habitat Store. What's the, what's the reasoning beyond, behind not just putting housing in that footprint?
So the reason for the, the shape, the shape of the building on either side allows itself to have, have more windows, kind of just the layout of the units inside the building footprint. It's just better layout, allows quality units with more daylight. You start, if the building's too big and too square, you've got some of that interior space is unusable. The unit design, yeah.
And then last question. You guys seem to have a lot of parking. It's like four stories of parking. Is that in excess of the city requirements? Is that meeting the city requirements? And what, what's the reasoning there, given that it's a pretty-
Sure.
-close and easy route to downtown?
Yep, yep. You know, I think the requirement is one parking space per unit. So that would be 100 spots right there. With the commercial space, it would be another 14-plus spots and there's just maybe a few spaces left over to get to that 130. But I don't, I don't think it's grossly excessive for parking. Yeah.
It's green.
Good.
Chris, I'm, in looking at this, and I know this is very early, and looking at the massing plans on the site, it looks up, it looks like you're filling up most of the site with building. I'm concerned about that space between the public streets, sidewalks, activity, and the buildings. Are there nodes of public activity being thought about, trees? What, what kind of amenities humanize this complex?
Sure. Oh, and I can see your concern. It does take up a lot of the site. And I guess to answer that question, we are, for the residents in the building, are planning some amenities on the rooftop and in the, in the courtyard.
Is the courtyard accessible from the street?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be public, publicly accessible-
Okay.
... for the people that live in the building. But I think the, you know, we are, we are proposing a little bit of a step back on Allied Street. I know this really is an answering your question. There won't be a lot of room for, you know, big canopy trees on the site, but we feel that McIntyre Plaza in general's got more of an urban environment and it gives, I think, utilizing this site to its potential, we felt like was a good move in lieu of creating more green space on site. Residents are really close to the community outdoor green space that could be used while not displacing places to live in parcels like this was our, was our thinking.
But on Harris Street, it looks like you're building right up to the property line?
I think on Harris Street, there's actually a- I think on Harris Street, there's actually a, um, you have to build to a certain distance of the street, you're not allowed to exceed, I think there's a, there's a minimum on, off Harris. Brian, do you...
I'll check.
All right.
Okay, good, he'll check.
Yeah.
Because, and we, you know, what's being asked for is to increase the height of the building on Harris from four to six
Right.
Which, um, increases that scale and that relationship to the street already, or well, four stories is already taller than the other things along Harris Street, uh, going up to six exacerbates it. So, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about that, um, that relationship.
Sure.
The, um, Jody, isn't, isn't, uh, isn't the construction gonna be in a little, um, there's a little valley there, right? So even though it's gonna...
But it's above, six stories above
What I'm...
Above Harris Street.
Six stories above the plane of Harris Street, no.
Yeah.
They're, they're building in a hole, so it's, it's actually taller, but above grit, above Harris Street, six stories.
Okay.
Uh, staff has recommended some, uh, uh, requirements that we might consider, uh, if we choose to, to grant this request.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh, height, uh, parking restrictions, um, oh God, one more that I can't remember now, I'm sure it'll come up possibly. Um, do this seem, seem reasonable, are those, do those pose a, a serious construction?
Traffic studies, the other one.
Traffic study, thank you.
What was the parking restriction?
You have to have underground parking in a parking structure.
Yeah, I mean, I think in this location, uh, we would, you know, that's, that's our plan, I don't think that would change. Uh, the traffic studies, uh, we don't see any issue with performing a traffic study. Um, I, I will say, I will add that I think the residents coming to and from the building at this location, um, is, I think is counterflow to rush hour traffic at the, uh, at the Harris, at the McIntyre intersection.
And that extra 10 feet, um, that would be allowed under the six-story rule, um, would you be able to fit more units in potentially if you had that extra 10 feet, or does that not make a difference to you?
Um, I don't know how, I don't know if you're allowed to exceed six stories and, and at that 10 feet, that would be a question we'd have to look into. I don't know if anybody here knows that answer, but...
Yes.
Brian knows all.
Brian knows everything.
I think we would be open to looking at more units if, you know, if we, if we could design it within that maximum height, yeah.
What, at what time would you be able to say definitely? Do you have a calculation of how many more units and how that would affect the portable housing percentage inside the building? And what, at, at what time would you have a better idea?
Uh, I think, you know, late, I think later on in the design, probably like building, real building permit stage, like before you submit a building permit.
You could calculate that.
Right.
A couple of answers for you. First of all, no required setbacks on the site, um, industrial corridor. In fact, there's a maximum setback, front setback of 20 feet, um, on primary streets. Uh, linking streets have a 10-foot setback, but Harris is a primary in this corridor.
But they're allowed to be...
They can, they can step it back, um, or set back the building, I don't wanna use the right word here, um, up to 20 feet on the primary street.
Twenty.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, the, uh, other answer, yeah, six stories is the height limit, so six stories, they can't add a seventh with the additional height. Um, I'm merely reflecting what they show in their packet, which is Harris Street is sitting at an average grade of 450 feet above sea level, they showed their roof line at 510, they could go to 520, but there's no additional square footage added by doing that, it's, you're adding more floor to ceiling height at that point.
Just remind me how we calculate, uh, number of stories or the first story, cause there's like
Right.
Stories on top of four stories of parking that don't count, right?
Right, right. So, anything below the grade does not count. Um, so this building, as you see it, um, one of the ways they've designed it, it, you know, steps down so that it don't exceed the six-story height requirement at any point. Um, and Allied, it's four stories.
And that's all parking below grade?
There's a few commercial spaces, if you look at your packet, they actually, the way this, the way the building, uh, is shown in the package, they, they have an entrance off of Allied to get to that bottom floor, and then you would turn the corner, if you're familiar with the site, there's the access road that goes by the Habitat Store that goes up the hill, uh, to get to the parking lot for the Habitat Store that they can then use to get into one or two of the floors there, and then at some point they have to use Harris for the rest of it, so.
For all four floors
Yeah.
Of parking, they actually have an ungrade entrance at each floor.
Right, yeah, any, once you ramp inside, you start losing a lot of the efficiency of the, of the, you lose a lot of spaces.
So G, um, uh, section six, G4 is at grade
At Allied.
And is not, right, and is not necessarily parked.
It's, it's shown in the package as being, it was about 4,000 square feet at that level, and it's, uh, they, they, it looks like they're contemplating, uh, a little bit of corner commercial there, uh, and then
Parking behind it.
Entrance, yeah. And then as you go up, there's a commercial space on G2.
And isn't Allied just a, a street that would have some trouble with congestion? I will, the pre, traffic study would determine that, but
The issue with Allied
Makes it right out on it from a parking garage.
The, the, the issue with Allied, I don't think is the volume of cars on it, it's the interaction, it's that it's so close to McIntyre
Yeah.
And Harris, the intersection of McIntyre and Harris, that it's a very...
And I can only do a right turn.
Yeah, yeah, making a left is, that is really tough, you have to let, somebody has to let you in, basically.
Okay. That's a, I think that's a potential safety, you know, I, I'm not a traffic study person, but that, that, that's really tight.
The, the traffic engineer, what they've, uh, at least what, what Brennan has mentioned in the past is, in the past meeting was, I think the, the long-term solution here is to have a dedicated right turn lane
Yeah.
Coming down from Harris onto McIntyre to pull anybody trying to go right out of that queue. Um, that may make Allied work a little better, but it's a, it's a clunky intersection anyway, and it's all on one side of it, so that makes it worse.
Thank you.
All right, Brian? Oh, and, uh, sorry, one more thing for you. Um, the underground parking requirement, um, is that just because it's in the plans, or is that because we don't want them to have surface parking, or because we don't want them to, if we ever change the parking regulations, change their plans?
That is because it's in the plans. Um, I do think that, you know, I mean, avoiding surface parking, if at all possible, in terms of the efficiency of the site, is, is good. I don't know that they have any plans otherwise, um, so, but it was mainly to try to, you know, pull the aspects of the building that they, you know, we thought were really beneficial. Um, I'd hate for the planning commission to see this and then get a building with, you know, just surface parking.
So would it make sense to maybe flip that condition to be, instead of it has to be underground parking, no surface parking? Also, is it technically underground if it's at grade for Allied Street?
I think you could say it's structured parking at that point, it's contained within walls. Yeah, I mean, if you wanna change it to structured parking, that's fine.
Thanks, jumping there, Hal.
I'd like to make a motion?
We need to have a public...
We got a little bit more to go.
Excuse me, I, I was in the future. I'm sorry.
Before we, before we do that, uh, is there any, uh, any comments from council and questions? There was no? Okay. Okay, so we will now open it up for public comment, and Josh, I think you're the, you're the only, um, woman who wants to chat so far.
Mr. Martin.
No, he's been waiting patiently for twenty hours.
I should have put you up first.
Uh, hi, I'm back. Um, this time I'm Josh, still live at 511 North First Street. Um, and I just wanna speak briefly in support of this proposal. I don't think it's perfect, I would love to see more affordable housing and less parking, but I live in north downtown and I'm one of the few buildings that actually has apartments that don't cost a million dollars, and I would like to stay living in this part of town, but I don't have a million dollars, um, and I don't think I will anytime soon. Um, so, even if the units are market rate, uh, if they're apartments, not freestanding homes, I could maybe afford one at some point, and that sounds great to me, because if I have to leave my apartment now, I have to leave the, a whole part of town unless I can, unless I win the lottery and can buy one of the houses in my block. Um, so I'm, I'm sure there are improvements to be made with the plan, but, um, let's, it sounds perfect to replace one duplex, so two market rate units with 100-plus units, um, even if they aren't the best possible units to build there, I, I would love to see something built in that site. Thanks.
Yeah, Martin?
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you for your patience.
My name's Martin Chapman, I, I, um, have, um, two buildings, two commercial buildings on Harris Street, one of 1216, which is immediately near the site, and the other 700, which is a silverware building. So really, I came to this meeting to actually, to learn actually what's going on, and that wasn't really apparent from the, the website, the city website. Um, I think you need to realize that, um, Harris Street is a really busy street, it's the economic engine of the city with that and McIntyre Plaza. I mean, I applaud all the development that's being on, going on at McIntyre Plaza. I think there are concerns about, number one, that this actually is a loss of industrial land, and that there are very few spaces in the city, uh, where you can actually do this kind of work, um, and, and create industrial spaces and create businesses that are gonna employ people, which is all we do. There are hundreds of people employed on Harris Street. Um, at the same time, I acknowledge the need for affordable housing too. So, um, but I think there are issues related to this, that, you know, in terms of traffic, um, that could be serious. I mean, there are trucks on Harris Street, there are semis on Harris Street all day, um, where I, where my building is, there were difficulties at 1216 in terms of getting out of the street safely. Uh, interstate pass control, which is next door, they have 20 vehicles going backwards and forwards each day. Allied Concrete has a bunch of concrete trucks going through each day. This is not a leafy suburban neighborhood, this is concrete, man. You know, I mean, this is the real thing, and we need to bear that in mind. The city needs to do more, uh, development on Harris Street in terms of the road. The idea that people are actually gonna walk, I like the vision, but having lived, uh, having worked at 1216, none of my employees would really walk downtown because the road, there are no sidewalks that are reputable on Harris Street. Um, and so, um, and the idea that, yeah, like fanciful idea that they're gonna walk Dairy Market, come on, you know, it's not gonna happen. So I think that, that, that the city needs to reconsider that bend up there, and five or six years ago, I actually spoke to Jim Talbot about it, he said, "Yeah, we're gonna build a, we'll build a sidewalk down there, the city has the rights, and so we know what happened to that." So if we had 8.6 million, sure, let's develop this street, uh, because that's what, that's really for economic development purposes, for perhaps the more affordable housing a, a, as well. Because there are huge, uh, the tech, the, the, there are huge areas on Harris Street that are, that can be redeveloped as industrial sites, and that's what we should be doing. There are half, there are several biotech companies on the street, and I'm a member of Seville BioHope, we, we're promoting that area, it should be an area for technology development as we move out in these old industries and move into new technology. And so really, I am here to advocate for that, to advocate for a better street, and to also put in what housing and amenities we can, and I hope the council will actually pay attention to that and come and visit us on the street, and also see the beautiful mural that we put up on the building. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Please.
Nancy. Good evening, I'm Nancy Carpenter, I live in, um, the Rose Hill neighborhood, which I believe McIntyre Plaza is part of that neighborhood, and I do like McIntyre Plaza, it is a little treasure in Charlottesville, there are some great businesses there, and it's pretty, it's kind of tropical looking, I like the, the color scheme. But I, I do wanna support what this gentleman said about the sidewalk, when I first moved to Rose Hill, I walked a couple of times down to the Habitat Store, I was never so scared in my life. Um, so there really needs to be, you know, a very, very robust effort to, uh, make that road better for both pedestrian and bike, bike lanes. Um, it's not safe now with that sight distance, it's very hard when you're coming up from McIntyre to really see what's coming, um, towards you around that curve right now. Um, I, you know, support having, you know, more housing, we absolutely need it, but I'm a little dismayed that I didn't hear right now what the, um, income, you know, level might be for, uh, any affordable units that might be placed in that building, are you talking 60, 70, 50, 40, where, where are we at with that? I certainly would support more, um, you know, work, uh, well, I don't wanna necessarily call it workforce, cause that's also a term that's been co-opted a lot, but certainly something, uh, a little more affordable than, uh, what we see, uh, for one, two, and three bedroom, um, apartments. The other thing is, I know that, you know, for an SUP, you really don't need to contact, um, the neighborhood, but it would be nice if, you know, Woodard Properties would reach out to, um, the new, uh, Neighborhood, um, Association, you know, president, and just kinda say, "Hey, we wanna do this," cause I'll tell you what'll happen, and, 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 it's happening more and more, is that people are coming, uh, I think what people will do is they'll come out to Harris and take that right, and they won't go up to Preston. What they'll do is they'll either cut across Concord on the, uh, grade crossing on the railroad, or go across Henry underneath the underpass, and then go up Henry Avenue and connect with Preston to go onto Berks, cause you cut off three lights that way when you do that, cause I see it in the morning when I'm coming out, when I make the mistake right now, all the construction's going on, to go out by Shenandoah Jones and see the number of cars that are coming down, uh, in the morning that wanna come back the other way, maybe to catch 250. So, I, you know, I think the traffic study also not only needs to incorporate that, but also if it's possible to look at any type of, um, situation that might occur in that other residential part of that neighborhood going forward, because, um, if there is going to be some additional, um, residential density, because there are some properties up closer to Preston that could potentially be residential in the future, to really look at, um, the road there on Harris. I guess it's been something that's been on the back burner for a while, and now we've got, you know, some, some really robust, um, development going on, and, uh, hopefully that'll be that, and I just wanted to say, your mural is really pretty, we like it.
Is there anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? Right, public comment is now closed. Um, did I check with council, did council have anything they wanted to add? I forgot. No, yeah, that's right. I should... Okay, um, Hal, you were, you were about to say something?
I had something incredibly witty and intelligent to say, and it was absolutely, I have a motion. I move to recommend approval of a special use permit allowing the specific development proposed within the application materials for SP 19-00010, subject to the following reasonable conditions and safeguards, which are the conditions presented in the staff report.
Second.
Moved in properly second, and Ms. Creasy, would you poll?
Could we have some discussion?
Talk.
Oh, y'all wanna talk some more? Oh, all right.
I would like the developer to, when we come back for the, uh, site approvals, uh, to have engaged with what, what, what neighborhood
First.
Oh, there are, plus the industrial neighbors, because I think that, that there's great opportunity for creativity in this new kinda urban living, but it's gonna require people talking to each other.
Turns out it's actually in north downtown, because of the weird way this map is drawn, but probably does more, make more sense to talk to Rose Hill, as a north downtowner, however it is, so, I don't know if she agrees.
Ms. Creasy, let's talk, talk to me, talk to me.
I, I, uh, this one is a, kind of a double-edged sword for me, because it, it is an area where there is industrial area, and I think we need to be sensitive of that, because there are things, the biotech industry, and I know you have some involvement in that, that this would be that perfect location for that. That being said, it is a wonderful shopping center, and this is one of the things we talk about, about mixing in housing, so I wonder if there's a way to think about how we do that. Um, I agree, I think, Miss, our traffic engineer is gone. I think this is a great opportunity to look at, I know we're doing the sidewalk, but this is one of those wide, wide streets, it doesn't have to be a wide, wide street, and that increases traffic, uh, speeds. And, uh, a person who works over here and goes to the shopping center frequently, um, and also has a kid up at Burley, there's this, this, this is like a speedway to get to the other part from, from 250 to Preston, and I think we should really take a look at that and look at putting this on our list, with the other one I wanna put on the list for, so, uh, and you're right, there's a lot of heavy industrial traffic on this road, so maybe keep that in mind, and, and take a look at the connectivity when you're talking about, I know you guys don't like to put, put... I know you guys don't like to put pedestrians, but if there's a way for folks to walk and get down to that plaza without having to walk all the way around, with that connectivity would be super helpful from the top of that hill for people wanting to ask access to shopping. So, that was my only...
Can I just say one more thing about creativity? And looking at other municipalities that have gone through big growth, like Reston and Tysons and places like that, this is an urban-type area in this city. You could do elevated pedestrian walkways, but you'd have to work creatively with the neighbors, and it would be a whole different feel than anything else in the city. I think Charlottesville is capable of it.
I think it looks great. I just think there's some opportunity for some connectivity with the pedestrian accessibility there.
And I'd like to build upon that, too. Yeah, Harris Street is a miserable street to walk on now, but we are seeing this development and this activity at this end, and I hope we, it's outside of our purview to do anything about the rest of Harris Street, but for this small part, that's why I'm interested in making sure we have a humane, pedestrian-friendly way of walking along the street and the relationship to this development. And I want to make sure that is an attractive, green, I just want it to be, I want it to be that you want to walk by it, so that then when we do the rest of Harris Street...
One by the time.
One by the time. Say it.
So, just to add one more point to that, so a good friend of mine is Mr. Chapman's tenant in that 1216 building, and I've been trying to get him for, since scooters came to Charlottesville, to go scoot to work from downtown instead of driving there every day and getting his EV charger installed instead. And he definitely has hammered in that point of Harris Street is terrifying with all that, those concrete trucks there. And I will say, like, I've gone up to Seville Coffee on a scooter, and going up Schenks Greenway is pretty good, except that it starts, you know, like, way up McIntyre, and just to get there from, you know, passing the county office building is difficult, right? So we need to have those cohesive connections. I think in the long run, it probably makes more sense for people commuting up and down there to go along that McIntyre path, though of course, access to Bodo's is also critical, so.
And coffee.
Call for the question?
Are we ready? Any more discussion?
I got one question. Is this coming back before us?
Final site plan?
Final site plan. Very long.
Site plan.
And criticals.
Oh, yeah, yeah, got to get that right, guys. Uh, question, I need to poll board, please.
Okay. Mr. Lahendra?
Aye.
Mr. Soli Yates?
Aye.
Ms. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Mr. Stolensberg?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
And we will recommend approval of the SUP. We are not done yet. We've got to review the new guidelines that Rory and I had dicked out of. And Ms. Robertson pretty much did a darn good job of keeping us from killing each other.
Ms. Robertson did what?
I could tell the blood in this.
Could we have a five-minute bio break?
Okay.
Bio break?
Yeah, please make it five, because this shouldn't take that long, because...
Because I'm like, I just have a few questions.
Um, Ms. Green's got a question.
I pulled it.
Here we go. Page 51.
All right, five minutes, guys. Be back in five minutes. If you're not back in five minutes...
I know, I want to see my kid.
You get to read more.
Whatever you got to do.
Turn this back. Turn this back. That's tempting.
Don't tempt me.
You know, the guideline shall read all?
The guideline shall read that you shall be back within five minutes.
An ordinance that is not having enforcement.
Oh.
So, is this your... So, is this your...